Tell me when our room is full. All right, welcome to the special meeting of the Larkspur City Council. Today is Wednesday, October 1st, 2025. It's 5:30. Can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Margulies.
Here.
Councilmember Paulson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Andre.
Here.
Mayor Way.
Here. We will be adjourning to closed session and we will be returning after closed session. All right, welcome back. We were just in closed session and we have no reportable action. We're reconvening to open session. And it is our regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council on Wednesday, October 1st, 2025. It's now about 6:35. May we do roll call again, just to clarify it?
Councilmember Margulies.
I am here.
Councilmember Paulson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Andre.
Here.
Mayor Way.
Here. And Councilmember Candela is excused tonight. If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. This brings us to item number two, which is public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council for matters that are not on tonight's agenda. And since it has not been agendized, we can't have a lengthy conversation about it. But we may ask staff to put it on an agenda in the future and you will be aware of that. So is anyone in the audience want to talk to the council about a meet item not on the agenda? Wonderful. Why don't you come up to the, we'll start in the chamber and then we'll go to Zoom. So just come on up to the microphone and let's, let's make sure it's turned on and please, great, it's turned on. Introduce yourself and you have about three minutes. So, thank you.
I'm Ted Horton. I live at 14 Willow Avenue, have since 1995. My comment is about an item that is on the consent calendar, item 4.3.
So let's hold off on that. When we get to the consent calendar, I'll open that up for you to make a public comment on that specific item at the time. All right. Um, sir. And Mr. Horton, the consent calendar is coming up shortly, so.
Hello.
Hi. Yes, please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and community members. My name is Sergio Barajas and I'm a rep for Carpenters Local 35 here in Marin County. I'm here tonight to speak about the critical importance about having strong labor standards for upcoming projects in Larkspur. Labor standards are the foundational protections that ensure our workers are treated fairly with dignity and respect. These standards guarantee fair wages, health benefits, apprenticeship opportunities, and local hiring practices. More than just legal requirements, these protections are what stand between our community's prosperity and exploitation. There are difference between building a strong, vibrant economy that benefits everyone and allowing developers to cut corners at the expense of our neighbors and the integrity of our community as well. When we allow developers to bypass labor standards, we see negative consequences unfold in real time. Out of town contractors often flood into our city, bringing in workers who are not only from outside Larkspur, but are also paid wages that are far below a livable standard. These workers often do not have health insurance, retirement benefits, or even opportunities for skill development and advancement. Worse, still, they have no investment here. They won't be shopping in our local schools. They won't be sending their kids to our schools. They won't be contributing to our local economy in meaningful ways. Local workers who would benefit from these jobs are systematically shut out. However, when we prioritize labor standards like prevailing wages, skilled and trained workforce requirements, local hiring goals and health coverage for all, we are not just building housing or commercial space. We're building careers, investing in the future of our community and creating pathways for our neighbors to enter and thrive in the middle class. Labor standards are more than just a line item in a contract. They are a long-term investment in the economic health of our city. They provide a framework that ensures that those who work in Larkspur are not only treated fairly, but have the opportunity to grow professionally and contribute to the local economy. That's why we strongly urge the city council to ensure that all development projects in Larkspur include strong labor standards like implementing pre-qualification language that essentially levels out the playing field. This is not just about qualifying the quality of a building. It's about the quality of life for the people who build it and the residents who live here and work here for years to come. At the end of the day, the true value of any project starts with people who construct it. Our community deserves nothing less than high-quality, well-built projects that are the product of hard work, fair pay, and commitment to the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience have a public comment for an item not on the agenda? Yes, ma'am.
That's Grace Rainwater.
Hi, Grace.
Hi. So I'm over on.
Lower your, the mic so we can hear you better. Great, thank you. That's all right.
So I'm over on Rose Lane.
Yes.
And I am where like the library, the new library is being built, correct?
Yes.
Which is old, like, you know, Indian land. Okay, so if you go from where the canals are built, where Redwood is, my father designed those. Okay. Frank Rainwater, if you remember him, any of you. But from there to about where Left Bank is, there is a huge ant issue. And this has been going on for over 10 years. And it's not just my residence that I live at, at 207 Dougherty Drive. And it goes from literally where the canals are all the way up to Left Bank. So this is not just a home issue. This is a town issue. We're at the colonies. Why can we not project and see where the colonies are? Because if there is an ant issue like that and you guys are building a new library, you guys are going to have ant issues also. So you need to understand that this is an ongoing thing. And I'm agreeing with him to also on like labor of outside because I have seen multiple companies come in that are not in Marin, so I agree with you, of not being protected of. But how are we being protected of all the invasion of the ants? So this is going on for over a mile.
Okay.
And I have, you know, stuff from my dad's Excel spreadsheets from 2015 when those houses were like being built. So this is an ongoing thing. And if you have that issue, it's not just an HOA issue. This is a town issue. Where are the colonies? And if you're going to have that issue, it's going to go to the schools. It's going to go to the libraries. It's going to involve it.
So first I've heard of that. So thank you. I'll inquire about it. I hate ants. It's like my worst enemy.
So I have everything. I have multiple neighbors that have issues with it. I have multiple, like, companies that I know that are having issues with it.
Okay.
It is not just my residency. And this is an ongoing thing. And if you guys are building a new structure, which you are almost done with, which I've also corrected that someone has cracked one of the curbs. Okay.
Okay.
Which I've corrected with all them. This is an ongoing thing. So if it's not being corrected, you guys are going to have future down the road of an ant issue. Because we are at sea level.
Yeah.
So this needs to be something that needs to be corrected. Because if it's not, then you guys are going to have an ongoing issue.
Thank you. Ms. Rainwater, right? Great, thanks. Anyone else in the audience in the room have a public comment? Okay, seeing none. Are there any hands raised in the Zoom room? All right. So thank you all. I will close public comment. That brings us to item three, which are presentations. And tonight we have none, which brings us to item four, approval of the consent calendar. We've asked, been asked by an audience member to pull and discuss 4.3, and the vice mayor has also asked to pull 4.3. Are there other council members who are interested in discussing 4.1 or 4.2? Okay. Anyone in the audience interested in 4.1 or 4.2? No? All right. So I'll take a motion to approve those and then we will discuss 4.3. Oh, there's an agenda item in the back, agenda in the back you can read. One is just check registry and number two is our minutes from our last meeting. Just two. But the agendas are always available 72 hours in advance, online and posted. And they're also always available as you walk into this room. So.
I'll move 4.1 and 4.2.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? No. All right. So 4.1 and 4.2, Allison, are approved. So that brings us to 4.3, which is adopt resolution 4825 approving amendment number 13 to the city manager's employment agreement. So I'll ask for staff report and discussion on that. And then I'll have Vice Mayor Andre lead the questions and then we'll open it up to a public comment.
Madam Mayor, I'm much ahead of the staff report as written. The council conducted my performance review and we've agreed to make modifications to my employment agreement.
Okay.
They're stipulated in the staff report.
So for any discussion on that? Would you like to begin?
Yeah, so I just wanted to bring up for council that I've gotten some feedback from members of the public on this. And so one is just about, you know, us putting this item on the consent calendar. People felt like that was, like, we should discuss it because people, members of the public are interested in what we can say about our deliberations. And I don't know if we can say anything. So that was point number one is, you know, people don't like that it's just on the consent calendar and feel like, you know, they don't get any color in terms of, you know, how we arrived at the decision. The second point is, I got some feedback in terms of, oh, and the other thing too is, you know, I asked people to come to the meeting and it's, Mr. Horton is here. But I think also this, this issue in particular, people have had or will have issues before the council. And so they're reticent to come and speak on this topic. So, so I think that you should, that that is just something that us as council members, I think we should be aware of. And then with respect to, so some of the questions now of, you know, that I got. So one was, did, did the council take into consideration the city manager's handling of the Serenity project in its deliberations? So, and then the second question was actually from a, an elected official in a jurisdiction in Marin who said, hey, you know, in a time when cities and towns are are facing, you know, tighter budgets, did you all consider that increasing the base salary might lead to an escalation of, you know, neighboring jurisdictions, you know, salaries for the city manager? So that was the second.
So those are the.
Yeah, so those were the two issues or questions that I got.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'll turn it over to legal counsel to sort of outline. So for, for the public to understand, one of the roles of city council is we don't hire and fire people with, who work within the city. We have a chief executive officer, which is the city manager. And that's the only contractual relationship that the city council gets involved in every year with a performance review, if salary adjustment, benefits adjustments, et cetera. So it's generally done by our council once a year. Sometimes we have it's been every two years and sometimes every three years because we haven't been very consistent at times. So this year, as mayor, I wanted us to try to be more consistent in our review because I think it's an important part of keeping a chief executive officer. So one option that cities often will do is have an outside consultant help them with this process. So we tried that out this year. We hired an outside consultant to help us work through the employment relationship. But there are limitations legally in which the employment relationship can be discussed outside of a confidential relationship. And can you explain what those are? Because this is always done in a confidential manner and in closed session by California law, so I understand. In the confidential nature, nature of salary negotiations between a public employee. Is your mic working?
There we go. Thank you. Yes. So anything that's discussed in closed session regarding the city manager's contract cannot be legally discussed outside of the closed session. And that is to protect the city's business interests and also to protect the employees' performance. And so anything that you would like to discuss outside of that needs to be in closed session.
So what are the limits of the deliberation that can become a public conversation?
The sole things that can be discussed are what's in the contract of the city manager.
Which is a public document.
Correct. Yeah. So salary or like a COI increase each year, some of the, the hard line items of the contract. Anything such as what went into a performance review, such as like the handling of Serenity and such, that cannot be discussed outside of closed session.
But it can, it can be within closed session, but we, but by California employment law, we can't have a broader community conversation about that.
Correct. Yes. It's only the resulting decision that council made regarding the, the end salary amount.
And what about conversations about salary comparisons and deliberations? Is that also, that's a public document too, isn't it?
Salary comparisons to other.
To other jurisdictions.
Yes, that's public.
So that's an available information for the public to.
Correct. Yes.
But the, the conversations about where a council may line up the salary differential, is that open to public conversation?
Like the reasoning that went into it's councils? No. That would not be public.
So in what categories would, as we, when we do this again, what options are there for more public conversation in the, under the law for a salary adjustment and a compensation discussion? Is there any?
People are allowed to give public comment on factors that they would like council to consider going into a labor negotiation. But beyond that, council can't discuss the, you know, nuts and bolts of how they broke down that review.
Out of closed session. Correct. Okay. Hmm. Did that bring up any other thoughts?
So, I mean, you know, as you're thinking ahead, that would mean we may go into closed session, but then have public comment prior to closed session for input? Is that, is that?
That's not unheard of.
Okay.
The performance review of the city manager is publicly noticed. It's not unheard of in some cities for people to come and make comments to the city council, knowing you're going into closed session for that purpose.
Yeah, that might be something to consider adopting as we've made these policy changes this year to have a.
Well, it's not, it's not, sorry, sorry, interrupted.
Yeah.
It's built into the system. Public comments on the agenda for the day that a performance review happens in closed session. So a member of the public can see that a performance review is taking place and they can come make a comment before you go into public.
Which is what we did earlier in the year before we had our closed session. We did have it on the agenda.
It's not unheard of for that to occur.
Huh. Okay. Did it bring up any further questions? Because we're past all that point now. I mean, we've already done.
The only thing that it brings up for me was that the public doesn't know where each council member stood on the negotiation. And that is never something that is so never revealed.
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah, that's not revealed.
Okay.
And that's not just our policy. That's state law that for, for negotiations. Is that right?
Well, I'll quibble a little bit. You still have to take a vote. So.
Right.
You can make it pretty clear to people how you feel by how you vote.
Yeah. But we already, we do a vote within the closed session too about, I mean, we have consensus during that time. So, okay. So anything, any other thoughts that, about that at this point? I can open a closed session. We can come back. I mean, open it to public comment and we can return to this.
Let's do that.
Yeah. Okay. So we're just discussing 4.3, which is the amendment to the city manager's employment agreement. Sir, you had something you wanted to say? Thank you for waiting because.
Yeah, Ted Horton, 14 Willow Avenue, been there since for 30 years. My comment is basically about, it is a public, the public does have, can't ask that the final vote be done in public, correct? You do all the negotiations. I mean, Larkspur's had a busy year this past year. Closed out Serenity. We narrowly missed Measure K, which was this terrible rent control. You know, we only short by 1,400 votes. And you got the library approved and under construction. So it's been a busy year for everybody here. But it's, my comment is only that, why isn't it a public, why isn't the vote, the final vote on the resolution done in public? Because it seems that's a.
Again, Mr. Horton, it, it's happening tonight.
It is tonight. It is. But.
Who votes? Who's yea, who's nay?
That we're doing that tonight because that's the final document. But I think what our, a legal counsel was explaining is that all the preliminary work that was done and discussion in the closed session is confidential by.
That's your job.
Yeah, by law.
I understand that, but I'm saying, well, where, how did you all come out on this? And it's, that's the public vote that's tonight. That's what.
And it's also, and I don't, I make sure everybody also knows that this is a public document that's on our website and available. All of the employment document is and the performance. We don't post the performance review. Do we post a performance review? No, we don't because that's. Yeah, the goals are there.
Goals are there.
That's right. That's right. But I, I think if you're very curious about this in the years ahead, the opportunity to bring up issues for the council to then consider in their closed session deliberation, I think would be very valuable. Though, just the three you outlined are, are matters which we should take into account. And some of them we do take into account because we've been working on them, but others are brought up that may have been an interaction an individual had that they want us to know. So.
Correct. Yeah. My point was just it didn't seem like it should be on the consent calendar. That since you're going to be spending an hour or more talking about somebody taking down three bay trees and lit, putting a lien on their property, it would seem that that, that, you know, a $300,000 salary decision by the city is also something that should not be by consent, but should be.
I get it. But usually consent items are, because they've already been discussed robustly in, in advance by us and with had public process in, in advance. Or they're something, I don't want to say minor, but they are usually without a lot of discussion. But it's a good point. I hadn't thought of it before, but tonight we have it here. So, but I'm appreciative that we're getting the parameters of what we can discuss legally within the framework of an employment decision.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rainwater. Do you have anything else? Your hand was raised. So come on up. It's really specific though about this particular.
Yes. Curious as to back in the day when Cortomadera put out how much they each got in salary here. And Cortomadera had the most of salaries. So why can't you guys produce that and show where it's going to and where it is?
So that is a publicly available document. And we did review all of that.
So why does Cortomadera get it more than you guys?
So.
Because we.
I can't speak to Cortomadera's decision making.
Also, I'm just going to not lie. Please open the PSLA back up because you guys are losing sales tax.
Okay, thank you. So there are 11 cities and towns in Marin County and the salary structure of the managers, I believe, is publicly available information. We have often fallen within the middle, the median range. But it is part of the conversation that happens to be able to retain and attract chief executive officers. And if you're interested in that, the 11 cities and towns have it listed. They also have what their benefit salary structure is, how many population within their city, how many years of service that a certain manager has done. And all that is available. And I believe we may have even posted that, but I can't recall right now. So, okay, so there's no, oh, there is one hand raised and then we will bring it back to us after this one person. Is this Mr. Holmes? Hi, Mr. Holmes. Can you unmute yourself?
James Holmes.
Yes.
Two, two comments, or a comment and a question. Further to the public commenters, questions or, or comments about increasing transparency. Perhaps in future years, the city manager's report, which sometimes mentions things that are going to go up on the agenda, might mention that the contract or performance review is scheduled to come up at the next meeting. And then that might give people a little bit of extra notice, such as the commenter seemed to be wanting.
Got it. Noted, noted.
Yeah. Secondly, just if I can clarify or ask a question. Is it, is it the, I understand that the substance of a topic or criteria has to be confidential. However, does the mere fact that a topic was considered or not considered, does that have to be confidential? In other words, could the council state whether or not they, the Serenity issue was part of the discussion without saying what the substance of the discussion was?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Holmes. Let me ask legal counsel to clarify that. Is it possible for specific details or topic, topics to be reviewed or shared?
That is.
Microphones.
That is not one of the topics that can be disclosed. If it was something like the number of years in which somebody had worked at the city, that would be different because that is a, that's not a subjective factor. But year to year subjective factors are non-disclosable.
Okay. Okay. Um, did you, what, no? Okay.
I thought I might answer, there's, there might be some help for the public and for newer council members about procedure. Approximately 10 years ago, grand juries throughout the state advocated some pretty substantial and arguably radical modifications to the way all employee compensation was negotiated around the state. Larkspur, like most cities, rejected the vast majority of the recommendations because they were, they rammed a foul of California law. But one that the council adopted was that all compensation of employees would appear on two consecutive agenda. This item was on the consent calendar as an informational item at the last meeting. My understanding of what the instruction was I got from the council roughly a decade ago was to put the second round, regardless of whether it was me or the bargaining unit or the managers, on the consent calendar unless I was instructed otherwise by the council. That's why it's there. And I'm happy to take direction from the council to do it differently. But since that grand jury recommendation, we have been publishing employee compensation on two consecutive agenda.
Right.
And it's adopted at the second one.
And I think that's a conversation we can have for moving forward for, I mean, we have made some policy changes this year for our review by using an outside consultant. And if we want to continue that arrangement, we can also talk about schedule differences for that in the years ahead. But I think right where we are now, we've already, we're already to the point where we've done that work. But I think that's really good information. Were there any further questions you wanted answered?
So I guess this last, I guess the last question is, so the vote on the consent counter on this item tonight, are we redoing? I know, but are we redoing this vote? I'm unclear now. What are we doing?
This item was with, was pulled from the consent calendar. So now it needs to be voted on separately.
And so.
I know. So I guess what are, so we're voting.
It's approving the resolution that we've already discussed in closed session and made the changes to and had the conversation about our salary structure, et cetera. It's to approve that.
Right. I guess, okay.
Stephanie, is your question, if, if it were to go no, it overturns closed session? Is that what you're asking?
No, it doesn't overturn closed session. It just means we have not approved the manager's contract. The manager's contract adjustments and agreement. We'd have to go back to do that again.
Okay. Sounds like the same, but okay, got it.
Okay. Okay, I get.
So I think I can help here. I am not a represented employee.
Right.
I am not protected by certain laws that protect your represented employees. You can vote no tonight on this contract and you are not in violation of any law. We could have a different discussion philosophically. We could have a different discussion philosophically about what it means. But from a legal perspective, unlike we're this a represented bargaining unit, you you're not bound by whatever direction you gave me to prepare this item out of your closed session.
But to the point of this, this is our primary responsibility in many ways is that to to negotiate and discuss the performance review of the chief executive. And we've been doing this for months now. We've had a memo of expectations. We've had an ability to review that. We've had goals and performance expectations in the year ahead. We've had a consultant who everybody has been interviewed and had a chance to discuss their concerns with our consultant. And that was had a synopsis, which we got a confidential document about it even tonight, and opportunities to express our interest in our concerns. And we had a a full salary structure, which you enhanced by bringing in a lot more data to it, which was really helpful. And we had two closed sessions about this, which we had the file deck presented by our our consultant. So it has been a process that we've been going through now since summer. And we're to the final decision making tonight. So and moving the process in a different way forward, I think would be. I've made my changes this year because I really would like to tighten this process up and make sure we because, like I said in our previous conversations, there's been years where we have just given a wink and a nod and that was not appropriate in my for evaluating also. So this brings us back to four point three. Do I have anyone who would like to move four point three? Which is adopt resolution forty eight twenty five, approving amendment number thirteen to the city manager's employment agreement.
Yeah, I'll move that.
Do I have a second?
I can second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed?
I oppose.
Any abstention?
I abstain.
So we have four members here tonight and we have one abstention and one negative. And we're missing a council member, so we don't have a full consensus. So what do we do?
So in that case, it would not pass.
All right. So four point three does not pass, so we will need to circle back to this and have a further discussion when we decide to make some adjustments and put it back on the agenda. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us and I if we when we do that, I'd like to make sure we have a we have full five members of the council here so that we have a more representative amount of us. So that brings us to item five, city manager's oral report.
I'm gonna defer to the assistant city manager. She has a topic she wants to update the council about.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council and community. I'm Shannon O'Hara and I am the assistant city manager for the city. As I'm so often at the before you these days, I am making a pitch for our climate action forum next meeting, which is on which is on Octo Wednesday, October eighth. And I wanted to draw to it the attention, the agenda is going to be published this evening. One item that might be interest of the community and came before the whole council was the city's adoption of the Cal Green Tier One standards. And that process, it was a very long process to to move some of our electrification and climate goals forward under a state deadline due to change laws of cities abilities to amend their municipal codes to have electrification reach codes. There will be a presentation on the status of that effort. Since we last presented to the council and talked to the staff, there've been a number of updates on the city's path forward for the Cal Green Tier One standards. Unfortunately, we did not have all of the studies available to bring them before the California Energy Commission. And the city is going to be pursuing other avenues along with our some neighboring agencies and agencies throughout the state using the authority we have within our general plan. So that will be a topic of discussion. I can't answer a lot more questions now because it's not agendized at this meeting, but I can broadcast to the community that it will be an in-depth topic of discussion at the Climate Action Forum and before the city council as we move forward in this process.
Okay, are there limited questions to that?
Give me a couple of clarifying questions. I just can't give a presentation on the whole. The whole item.
Anything else for?
Also, if you'd like to attend that meeting, there's a couple of other items on that. We're making progress on finalizing the 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 action item goals for the staff work plan on our climate action plan with feedback from our Climate Action Forum members. And there will be a discussion on our current regulations and ordinance on leaf blowers and other electrified equipment, as well as an informational update on staff's use of electrifying our equipment and our fleets.
Okay.
So I do have one question. Thank you, Shannon, for that update. I'm still unclear as to whether or not we ever submitted to the California Energy Commission our ordinance for approval.
Right, so it was after talking to both the folks who I think I can answer this and not not be in in violation of the Brown Act. City Attorney, tell me not. Okay, that's the case. So that it wasn't eligible after talking to to staff who creates who creates the 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 studies and actually produces the data for us as well as staff at the cities.
So it wasn't eligible for submission to be approved by C E C? Somebody in? Help me understand how that transpired. Who told us that it's not eligible for submission?
See, staff and the people who who produce the the consultants who produce the data and provide us with the energy studies.
Okay, so does that mean no other municipality or city in the state of California is putting forward an approval of the Cal Green Tier One codes from the twenty twenty five building?
Answer that, I can talk about that at the I would want to do research on that and I can present on that and be prepared to discuss that at the Climate Action Forum.
Okay.
Follow up on that. I can, I don't want to answer that here, but I can be prepared to discuss that.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Shannon. Oh, did you?
One lighthearted item. I wanted to advertise on behalf of our recreation staff that we're having a pumpkin patch on Saturday, October eleventh from ten a.m. to one p.m. at Piper Park. It's a nice event and we do need some teen volunteers. So if you know some teens that might be willing to volunteer, get the word out and direct them to contact our recreation department.
Thank you. That brings us to council members' reports and comments. Gabe, you want to start? I got put to Sarah all the time, so I figured I'd give you give her a break.
No, this is, so just a brief one on kind of the intersection of, you know, environment, climate action and and transportation. So the Transportation Authority Marin is at its next meeting going to look really closely at the, you know, technologies and, you know, other, you know, changes that are coming in the next decade. So this is really meant to be a strategic and more far sighted look. And that's coinciding with a few things going on. So at UC Berkeley on the twenty third and the twenty fourth, a lot of the academics and people doing the research will be looking at where transportation is. And we know it's, you know, not only a source of irritation with congestion, but it's it's a major polluter. So so I, you know, that information is it's Luma dot com. And then it's also Clean Fleet Week Expo on October eighth, next Wednesday, from ten to three at the Civic Center Expo Hall. So those are, you know, I'm really looking forward to, you know, some of the discussions we'll be having. And then lastly, from the schools, this is also Transportation Authority of Marin does safe routes to school. Wednesday, Wednesday, October eighth will be walk and roll day. So it'll be a day for everyone to take their bike and their kids and and try to walk or bike to school as as a way to, you know, work on those alternate forms of transportation.
Great, you always riding.
I am.
Sorry, can you repeat the Clean Fleet Week Expo?
Yeah, so that's Tuesday, October eighth. And that's from ten to three at the Civic Center Expo Hall.
That's October eighth, a Wednesday?
Yeah, Wednesday.
You know what? Yeah, so that I got that I got that wrong. It said October eighth, so why don't we call that out? You know what?
Okay. And when you said the Civic Center, you're talking about the Marin Civic Center.
Marin Civic Center, yeah. Gosh, sorry for that. Confusion there. But yeah, it's if you just Google Clean Fleet Expo, we could we'll give you the accurate date.
Thanks, Gabe. Sarah, did you have any?
I just wanted to make a plug for the Marin Women's Political Action Committee. They have a series called Run to Win. It's actually a series that I engaged with when I was running for council. And I wanted to recommend it to anybody. It doesn't have to be a woman. It can be anybody who's interested in running for public office. It's a great opportunity to get educated on certain topics that are important when you're running or campaigning for office. There are two sessions in October, one's on the ninth and one's on the sixteenth. They both run from five thirty p.m. to nine p.m. And they'll cover certain topics such as fundraising, getting endorsements, writing your why statement, how you market yourself on social media, and how to to remain in compliance with the F P P C. So I just wanted to make a plug for it and let everybody know it was very helpful for me in running. And anybody who's interested should check it out. And that's October ninth and sixteenth.
Okay. Anything?
I just also wanted everyone to know that.
All three of us are members.
Yeah, all four of us. Actually, Scott, Mayor, Councilmember Candell is also a member. That Councilmember Sarah Margulies actually wrote a letter to the editor in the Marin I J about her run for office. So if anyone hasn't seen it yet, it was published last week. And I just wanted to remind everyone that next Tuesday, October seventh, is when we're going to have our second city hall workshop here at City Hall at six p.m. And that will include a charrette where we will have different stations where people can come and learn about different aspects of the city hall renovation. And also, we will break down into small groups led by staff and also members of the City Hall Ad Hoc Committee will be focused on different topics for discussion. And so people will break down to small groups so people can give us their feedback on specific questions with respect to City Hall. Thanks.
Okay. Okay, I have nothing new to report. So that brings us to why everybody's in the audience tonight, which is our public hearings. So we have three public hearings tonight at two different residences. And the handout information is available in the back, but we also had an online packet. So this is how public hearings work. Tonight, we will have our staff do a presentation to the council about the issue. And we will then take the opportunity to ask questions of staff about this appeal and the issues regarding that. And then, once we are complete with our questions, we will offer an opportunity for the appellant to come forward at stand at the microphone and and discuss the issue from their perspective. And we usually do ten minutes. And after the appellant is completed with their ten minutes, then the council will ask questions of that individual. And then we will also have an opportunity to have the staff do some clarifying questions if there is some discrepancy between what staff understands and council understands to what the property, the appellant understands. And then, since it's a public hearing, we'll close that and the appellant can sit down. And then the public has an opportunity to ask questions or to give their comments. And then we close that. And then we bring it back to discussion. If we have a need to have a return of the appellant to discuss things or to bring things up, we'll do another ten minutes. Is that clear to everyone? Great. So rest assured that we not only have these handouts, but we've had what's been posted on the online packet for all three of these issues. We're going to go to the first one. And that is an appeal of a heritage tree removal at thirty three Hillcrest Avenue. And the property owner appellant is Mr. Brennan Demrow, who is in the audience and will speak. So let's begin, Alex, with the staff report.
Sure, yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members. The item before you is the appeal of fines associated with an illegal removal of a heritage tree. For a bit of background, the city received a complaint regarding an unauthorized tree removal on July fourteenth of this year. Our contract code enforcement staff was able to visit the site the same day and verify that a tree had been removed without a permit. And subsequent to that, the property owner has appealed the fine citing that they were unaware of the regulations and protections around heritage trees. And for reference, a heritage tree is defined with as any tree with a circumference of fifty inches or greater, measured two feet above the ground. So per the municipal code, any person who unlawfully damages or removes removes a heritage tree must pay a penalty fine equal to twice the assessed value of the tree. The city retained an arborist who visited or prepared a report and used a formula to come up with a tree value of thirty two hundred dollars. And so when you incorporate staff time, the cost of the arborist and the penalty fee, the total penalty rises to seven thousand two hundred three dollars and ten cents. In addition to the fine, the municipal code also mandates replacement of trees on site. And in this case, the city arborist has recommended that the property owner plant a twenty four inch box Valley Oak tree as mitigation. So that I'm just going to keep it brief for you. That is all I have for you tonight. In conclusion, staff recommends that the council determine that the property owner did violate the municipal code, uphold the penalty fee and require a replacement tree. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Stay there, don't go. So let's start with questions of that presentation or what we know from the documented material that was provided. Does anybody have a question for Alex? Yes, go ahead.
Great, thank you, Mr. Othon. So are there any trees? Let's say this was not a heritage tree and the homeowner cut it down. Is there a fine or penalty for that?
No.
No, okay. So it's only because the circumference was greater than fifty inches? And by definition, that makes it a heritage tree? And is there any carve out under the code for the fire prone trees?
So the code does specify certain species are fire prone. The process then requires that a property owner, you still have to apply for a heritage tree removal permit. But in that case, if it is deemed to be a fire hazard, which is something done by the fire inspector, you don't pay the permit fee. And instead of going through the noticing process that you would otherwise go through, the permit is issued to allow for removal immediately.
Okay, so the permit is issued immediately, but you still have to pay the permit fee?
You do not have to.
Okay.
But there is a, I will just say the code does distinguish between fire prone trees and fire hazard trees. So there are species which are fire prone. Does not necessarily always equate to them being a fire hazard.
Which one's more severe, I guess, under the definition of the code?
The fire hazard trees are the ones specifically the ones that are penalty fee here. The permit fee is waived and there's no notification given.
Okay. And so in this scenario, then, this tree, even though it's categorized as a fire prone tree, it was not deemed a fire hazard tree?
Well, there was no, there was no review done. It's.
Because it was gone. Okay.
To not be a hazard. It's usually recommended that they be removed. But that reviewed has to take place subsequent to the application.
Right. Okay, and then my last question is, it seems like in the arborist report, you can't even buy a California bay tree because it could carry sudden oak death disease.
Right.
So I guess why are we, okay, I guess this, why are we protecting a tree that could carry a disease and then fining people for cutting it down?
In this case, it just comes down to the stipulation that it's a protected tree based on the circumference.
On the circumference.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
But you but the code requires the replacement of that tree with one that is not a California bay laurel.
Yes, in this case, it was the Valley Oak.
The Valley Oak tree, yeah. And do you have maybe, I know you haven't been in the city as long as I feel like I have. But can you, do you have a little of the history of why we have heritage tree preservation and how we went from species specific trees to more size of tree? Or are you aware of that process?
I am not personally aware of that discussion. The city manager may be.
That predates me, but I don't believe we've ever had necessarily species specific code. I think the code's always been written around the circumference with the understanding that when a tree has a certain circumference, it's realized a certain age generally. What's newer to the code that I do remember in my time here was empowering the the fire department and now Central Marin Fire to declare a tree pyrophitic and essentially, as you heard, get a tree permit right away. That's the only part I remember changing since I've been. That's the only part I remember changing since I've been here. And I'm not aware that it was ever specifically, for example, redwood trees. I certainly think most of us think redwood tree when we think of the ordinance.
Yeah. I recall that it was, I mean, this was in the, probably before 2015, that it was species-specific because it was primarily when it was discussed to save the tree canopy and the redwoods because those were the most, considered the most interesting and valuable historic trees here. But then it changed to circumference size because being very specific to, let's say, a redwood was not sufficient for protecting the canopy. So. Do you have any questions before we move on? My question is determining if it's a live tree. How do we go about doing that? Because it says a heritage tree is defined as a live tree with a trunk circumference of 50. And I believe part, and I'm sure the appellant will discuss this, but part of his appeal was that the tree was, had been topped. And we don't know if it was dead because it was gone, but how do we determine live versus unlive or dead?
So I would say staff always relies on the arborist's report to determine the health of the tree.
Okay.
In this circumstance, even the tree being topped would still have been a violation and require the same exact process with the penalty fee.
Because it would have, it potentially could lead to the demise of the tree anyway. Okay.
I wonder if it might be helpful to take a second and describe the process. Like, we didn't really, if a person walks in, Alex, can you walk, I walk in and I want a tree permit. What's the process?
So when somebody wants to remove a heritage tree, they need to provide an arborist report from a certified arborist. And they need to apply to the city for the removal. We will review that arborist report, which usually contains similar information to the one that was prepared in this case, which details the health of the tree and any potential health impacts. Staff reviews that arborist report and depending on the findings, may issue or may not issue a heritage tree removal permit. Usually, we, we do not issue them if there are no health impacts currently existing to that tree. It's really only if there is a structural issue or some safety hazard, or the tree is obviously dying or decaying, that it would be removed. Once, let's say, the determination has been made that it can go forward as a removal, there is a notice sent out. This is if it's not a fire prone, fire hazard species. And that notice gives property owners within 300 feet 15 days to request a hearing on the matter. And that would go before the planning commission for a formal decision.
Okay. And since we don't, uh, staff doesn't go around looking at everybody's yard, this is usually brought to the attention of staff because someone observes a tree being removed or a neighbor sees a tree being removed. We don't have information about that specifically, but we have had tree issues like this where people passing by have noticed it and have alerted the city. Is that correct?
Yes, it's usually a complaint that's made to the city or if the building inspector is on site and notices something going on, he'll report back and we will.
Yeah.
Take a look to confirm.
Okay. And then we moved the tree hearings a number of years ago. If there is an individual who contests the removal permit to the park and rec department, no, we brought it from park and rec to planning. Because we realized that that really, it really did not, it was really not a decision for the park and rec department to be making, but more for planners because they're involved in the building and structural analysis. So. Okay, any other questions? And then we'll come back to you, Alex. So stay there. Great. So this leaves us an opportunity for Mr. I forgot. Mr. Demrow, there you are. Mr. Demrow, please come forward to the podium. And you have appealed the, um, the fine. And you also submitted a two-page email, which is in the public comment, and of your background and explanation. And you're welcome to now address us for 10 minutes.
Yeah, thank you so much. Brennan Demrow and I live at 33 Hillcrest, and I've lived there since 2018. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for the time. I did prepare a few slides just to provide some context with respect to the tree. So I've lived at the property for seven years and I just wanted to share a little bit of history on this specific tree. So on the left is the actual lien question. And on the right is a picture of a tree that was actually damaged by severe weather three or four years ago. And so during the process of this damage from the weather, we actually took a bunch of photos. And an arborist actually told us that the tree in question that we're now receiving the fine on had severe IV damage. And due to that IV damage, there was a lot of oxygen being prevented from keeping the tree growing. And that the tree was eventually going to die, would probably be best to be taken down. So in, in spite of that, we actually planted 16 new trees in our backyard. And so the issue and the reason why we actually decided to take down the tree in question is because the tree was actually blocking light. That's the tree right here to the left. The tree was blocking light from these trees from growing. So we wanted to take the opportunity to let the other trees grow. And so to that end, we made the decision to take that tree down. As I said, given we wanted to see these trees grow, plus the other tree appeared to have significant IV issues, which probably was going to lead to its death. I did also read that, to Stephanie's point, that that tree was dangerous. And so I didn't read about the, the restrictions and penalties for taking it down, but I just read that, you know, cursory reading showed me that the tree was probably not great for, for California and for our yard. So a little bit about us, we're actually, you know, plant lovers. We've planted a number of trees. We live a very sustainable lifestyle. So this is something I obviously care dearly about. I would not go around taking down trees, but given the aforementioned issues with respect to this tree and wanting to see other further trees grow, we made this decision. So thank you for hearing my appeal and my ask to the committee is to reconsider this, this fine.
Thank you, sir. And you said you, when you notice all the IV, et cetera, and I assume you've been doing some renovation or something there, but that's not what we're discussing tonight. But did you have that arborist report to, to submit? Was that part of our doc?
I didn't have an arborist report to submit, no.
You just had an arborist come by and.
During, during the storm and the removal of those trees.
Yeah.
Comment, this was five years ago.
Okay.
He made the comment that that tree did not look healthy, just given the IV buildup. So yeah, no report was made. And I did not document that, but just providing the context.
So the, it's my understanding that the tree appeared to have been topped. Was that?
That tree was that, was that way when we moved in.
When you moved in?
Yeah. So that tree was pre-existent to our arrival at the property. I have no context to how the tree was topped, but it's been in that shape since we moved into the property.
Okay.
Yeah.
You have more time. Do you want to just reserve it for later?
Yeah.
So, thank you for the presentation. Are there questions of?
Sure, I'll go. Um, yeah, thanks for some clarifications. I'm, I'm wondering why you didn't just apply for a permit?
For the tree itself?
Yeah.
To be honest, I just didn't think of it. So I'll take ownership.
You didn't?
I didn't think of applying for a permit. I just thought, given the state of the tree, I didn't know that there was a kind of a historical context. So that's, that's just on me. So I didn't think I needed to have a permit to, to, you know, take down the tree, given the state of the tree.
Okay.
Well, you mentioned it, it was, you understood it to be a remnant trunk, just half topped, a top docked tree.
Yes, like I just kind of looked at the tree, the optics of it looked really poor. There was IV surrounding it, the comment made by the arborist during the storm and the removal of the subsequent trees. I just collected all those data points and thought, this looks to be a dying or decaying tree. And it's in, you know, blocking 16 trees that we had planted, net new trees. And so I made the decision to, to have it removed.
And, and it was professionally removed?
It was.
And did the tree removal company mention anything about a permit?
They did not.
Okay.
Because one of your primary arguments is awareness and intent, that you were unaware that a remnant tree, as you described it.
Yes.
And we, the tree's gone, so we didn't, we didn't have any ability to, other than this photograph, to, to verify that it was a remnant tree.
Totally understand.
Right. But your argument is that you were not aware that those qualified under our heritage tree removal requirement, a remnant tree?
Yeah. I, I was not astute to the tree kind of situation.
Got it.
I just, I was, again, basing off optics of the tree.
Yeah.
And the comment from the arborist that it did not look healthy. And there was blocking the light from the trees we had planted. So I just, I thought it was in the best interest of the property and the other trees that, given the state of this tree, it did not look healthy. It was, you know, it could probably go.
Okay. Are there further questions of this gentleman? No.
What, what company cut it down?
We had just a local, I'll have to go back and look. It was just a local place that came out. It was like a 30-minute job. They literally came and took that one tree down.
Okay, um, you can have a seat. We do have some opportunity for the community to ask questions.
Sure.
And if I, if they have some, I'll have you come back up.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you.
But that doesn't go into your time, should, should we?
Appreciate it.
Need to. I think, and just sit kind of in the front row so you can, you're available if there's a question. Yeah. So I see we have one hand raised online. Is, I think this is Mr. Holmes. Could you identify if your question is for staff or for the appellant? Or for us?
James Holmes, Larkspur. I, I've just to make a comment, well, two comments. In considering both this, in your consideration of both this appeal and the following appeal, I'd like to just mention that an additional factor to consider should be the provisions of the Climate Action Plan, which you have adopted. And there is a chapter, it's not labeled, but it says sequestration and adaptation. And, and at the bottom of the first page, it's on page 35 and 36. It says, "The city will take the following actions to sequester carbon dioxide and adapt to climate change." And then that chapter is divided into several portions, and one of them is labeled as SA-C1 Urban Forest. And there are, uh, there are two items, C and D, which are relevant here to your consideration, in addition to the tree order itself. D says, "Continue to regulate and minimize removal of large heritage trees and require planting of replacement trees and/or fees to support mitigation planting in Larkspur Parks and open space areas." That's subsection C. And note that it says minimize removal. Subsection D says, "Require that the site plant
Sorry, Mr. Holmes, your, your audio is going out.
Number D says, "require that the site plant construction and maintenance of new development to preserve healthy trees and native vegetation on the site to the maximum extent feasible. Place trees and vegetation not able to be saved."
So. Yes.
Those two points are, are relevant to consideration. And my other point is just to mention the wisdom of your former colleague, Councilmember Len Rifkin, experienced land use attorney. And in these situations, he always stressed the importance of not giving the impression in Larkspur that it is easier or cheaper to ask permission than.
Than forgiveness, yes.
It is not easy or cheaper to ask forgiveness than to ask permission.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Your audio is getting bad. So if you hope to make another comment in the, in the rest of the meeting, could you please redial in and maybe we can get a better connection for you next time? But I think we got the gist of it. Did everybody seem, before it got a little garbled? Okay. I don't see any other, other hands since the public hearing. Is there anyone in the, yes, Ms. Rainwater? You'll need to come to the microphone, please. And if your question is.
Construction or the topping off because of electrical wires?
Well, that's a question we'll ask that. Hope, so the question should come to us and, yeah.
I'm curious of, because I know a lot of Larkspur now is like underground wiring.
Yes.
So was the topping of because of electrical wires of a fire safety in that hazard versus a dead tree?
So the, what the, Mr. Demrow has, has testified to is that it was topped before he purchased the property. So we didn't know.
But are there wires there?
All right. Well, let's, are there wires above that, your yard area? Not currently. Okay. Okay. So if there's no other, uh, public comment on this or other questions, we'll close public hearing and bring it back to the council. Our, let's begin with any questions we may have of staff to clarify anything.
So Alex, if you had gotten a permit, if planning had gotten a permit for this tree, to remove the tree, would it have been granted based on the arborist report?
It's difficult to say without having the arborist report that specifies exactly what the conclusions are regarding the health of the tree. If the arborist report had said that the, you know, the IV has caused this oxygen deprivation issue and the tree is dying or dead or going to die, it may have been granted.
But that's a hypothetical. We don't know because it was removed prior to any type of city arborist being there.
Yes.
We've had, I've only done one tree hearing similar to this in my term, and it was a similar, not a similar situation, but it was a redwood tree. And the property owner had removed the redwood tree without a permit. And it was, the tree was physically removed from site. So we didn't have any data on what the tree was. So it's a hypothetical that we have to, to move through. Are there other clarifying questions of any of us? Was there anything that was brought up that you would like to clarify for us?
I don't believe so, not unless you would like me to clarify something.
Okay. All right. So discussion. Our staff recommendation is to uphold the staff determination that the property owner violated municipal code and uphold the $7,203.10 penalty and tree replacement requirement. And to authorize the imposition of a special assessment and lien on the property to be collected with regular property taxes if penalties remain unpaid by November 4th, 2025. Can I open the discussion for thoughts on that staff recommendation or do you have another idea based on the testimony? Okay, I'll start it if nobody else is. Thank you for being, uh, being here and providing this. These are always complicated because we really are often brought into these discussions when neighbors are unclear, are concerned about something. So we have to often balance neighbor concerns as well as what we have to balance as far as the integrity of what the values Larkspur has for our environment and particularly the tree canopy and our heritage trees, which are large trees. That's why it's based on circumference as opposed to individual. I, but I understand in your testimony and in the evidence you applied, your plan was to add a whole bunch of new healthy trees, bought the property, see that this is kind of a damaged tree and full of IV, which meant it was probably suffocating the tree. I'm hypothesizing that. And saw it as an impediment into your landscape plan and unknown to you. I believe you, you didn't know that that requalified because to you, it looked like a junk tree. Let's just say that. And because of the way you described it. So awareness and intent falls heavily to me that you did not try to circumnavigate or circumvent, excuse me, one of our policies. I believe that you did it unintentionally. It's kind of where I'm falling in this. But we have to also balance that with the fact that we have a very strong community code of keeping our trees as healthy and as well and as there as possible. So I am leaning towards understanding that you didn't know that this was a requirement and would have applied for a removal of it if it had been known to you. And those are unique circumstances because we have had other tree, people who, situations in which the homeowner said, well, I was just going to do it, you know, regardless of whether you approved of it or not. And that's not the way we like to run things. So that's where I'm leaning. Where does everybody think about that? You also applied for this appeal at $1,000 to be able to appeal. Are there thoughts you have on, on sort of where I'm leaning on this? Sarah?
I, I'm not sure I understand when you're saying you're leaning in a certain direction in that you're suggesting that because he didn't have mal-intent because he was removing a tree unaware of our heritage tree laws, municipal codes. Are you leaning in removing the fees? Is that what you're saying?
So I'm not saying unaware of them because I'm, I think that under, what I understand his testimony to be is that this tree having been topped and appeared to have been decaying anyway, with IV crawling all over it, that it wouldn't have even qualified for our, our heritage tree category. And to me, that's an honest mistake. So. If it had been a full grown tree that had a full canopy of. cut, and I don't know who did that. And we don't have any evidence that he had done that unintentionally. We have had circumstances where people damage a tree so that it dies, so that they can take it out. But I don't feel, I don't see that there's any evidence that that happened here.
So I, I would say that my position on this is that I understand that you were unaware and you did not have bad intent. But I also feel that ignorance is no excuse in the law. And I would consider revisiting the fines. You know, at this point, we've already sent out an arborist, or we've paid an arborist to give us a report. We've also sent out our enforcement officer, so you know, time is money. And I would like to see a tree replanted, although I did see that you planted sixteen others. But, you know, in my view, in order to be equitable and follow the code of law, I believe that another tree should be planted. And so I'm not, I would not be leaning towards completely removing all of the fines. I certainly would want to recover our costs.
So that would be the $513.30 for arborists and the code enforcement officer, which is the $289.90?
Correct.
Okay.
And then, you know, replacing the tree, so whatever that's going to cost, I mean, that's certainly not a cost to the city, but having you plant another tree, the one that is suggested. So that, that's sort of where I'm moving.
Okay. Was, Alex, was one of the recommendations to replace a tree with a different tree, considering that in his landscape view here, he's already planted sixteen, it looks like Privates or something, already planted sixteen additional trees?
Yes, that was the, the recommended action was to plant an additional tree.
And you recommended...
Twenty-four inch box.
Would it need to, is our recommendation that it go exactly in the place where this other tree had been or just somewhere on the property?
Just somewhere on the property.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll go, I mean, I, you know, I think one of the challenges of not just Larkspur, but any municipality is all the ordinances, you know? So we have 175 chapters, over a thousand ordinances. And I don't know if someone can just come and say, "I didn't know the ordinances." And, and I think I really appreciate that you said you took responsibility, which to me means paying the fine. And, and I think also what's challenging, your circumstance, I'm inclined to agree with Catherine, I mean, there's, there's some extenuating pieces to it. But, you know, what we get in general, I'm even thinking of, you know, a lot of applications where people will talk about a tree that is interfering with their sunlight or view or something. You know, it's really more in the public domain. It's not what my feelings are about trees or if I'm an environmentalist. I think we have sort of a social contract here where the, you know, this, this asset requires process. And, you know, everybody in Heather Gardens where I live knows about the trees. And, you know, I didn't move in much before you. So I think it's not a very esoteric, recondit law. I think it's one that's pretty well-known. So I'm, you know, I really sympathize and I, but I think if you saw it was unhealthy and you had an arborist, I'm quite surprised they didn't say anything about removal because it seems really common knowledge in, in my neighborhood at least. So I'm, I'm inclined to uphold, you know, what, what the plan important said.
So you're inclined to uphold the total calculation of the penalty as opposed to what Sarah had discussed with...
Well, I, you know, I, I think there, there should be some, you know, let's, let's discuss it, you know, I don't, I don't want to be a hard ass, but I, I do want to say that, that ordinances are important to uphold.
Box Valley Oak Tree, okay. Stephanie, did you start it?
I was just going to say, Catherine, you know, potentially, you know, based on Gabe's comments to, you know, the penalty is, is worthy of upholding, but maybe not the tree value, given that the tree was compromised and damaged, right? So that maybe that's the consideration in terms of the fines.
Suggestion, okay. Stephanie, what do you think?
Yeah. So let me just clarify. The homeowner, I believe, is asking for a waiver of the penalty. Can you, can you clarify, please, what you're, you're asking for?
So you'll need to come up to the, sorry, we're recording everything, so you have to come up to the microphone.
Yes, to be clear, I'm asking for reconsiderations of the total penalties, whether that's a total waiver or a reduction up to the, you know, committee's discretion, but, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. So I mean, I, when I first read this, I was inclined to just waive the $3,200 penalty so that the city recoups its costs and that had he known about the ordinance, he would have applied. I do believe he's an honest person. He would have, had he known, he would have applied for a permit. So, and he would have paid the $3,200 permit. So my, my inclination is to waive the $3,200 penalty and just, you know...
Recoup our costs?
Well, recoup our costs plus this $3,200 that he would have paid.
No, the $3,200 was the tree value.
Value, the tree value.
Yeah, he wouldn't have had the permit, the permits themselves are, what, how much is a permit? That's the estimated tree value.
It's $234 to apply for a heritage tree removal permit.
Oh, oh, it's 230 for the permit?
Yes, that $3,200 is just based off of a formula that the...
Oh, I see. Okay. All right.
It's in the, it should be in the arborist report, this map.
I believe the $3,200 is an approximation of the value of the tree based on the...
Right. Oh, I see.
The tree size.
Okay.
So in your theory, if he had applied for a permit, it would have cost $235 and 10 cents or whatever, $235 for the permit. And so what I hear you saying is we need to recoup our costs to have this process go forward and that you also think it's appropriate that he should pay for a permit, the fee, the permit for the tree, because it's gone. But that you are not interested in the penalty or the tree value estimation at this point, which are the $3,200?
Correct. Yes. And I also, I mean, given that he's planted sixteen trees, I'm not sure that he needs to plant another tree. That would be, that's my personal, that's just my personal opinion.
I will say I've actually planted additional trees around the property. Those were just in the direct area.
In the area.
I think I've had a total of twenty trees around the property itself since I've moved in, just for context.
Okay. So that's kind of where I'm headed.
You have a hard house to get to. I tried to go look. Oh, man.
Yeah. It's, it's quite confusing.
It is.
Google Maps is still believes that that path is the road.
Yeah.
And so if we have people come to our house or guests, we actually have to take a screenshot
I knew that.
And send directions to the house.
Very hard to turn around, too.
Yeah. Apologies for the inconvenience.
It's okay. 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 So any further thought? What I'm hearing is, let's see if I got this right. What I'm hearing is, seems to be consensus that we need to recover our arborist costs. We need to recover our code penalty enforcement officer cost, which is a suggestion you had, which totals $803.10. You suggested that this tree would need to be removed, so there would need to be a $235 permit for that. There's also the expectation that there's a replacement, but it sounds as if you've put in plenty of trees. Is that an acceptable thing, that all these additional trees? Or do we need to make a judgment on that based on what your recommendation is?
I would say that that is up to the council's discretion.
Because you wanted a 24-inch Box Valley Oak Tree.
Yes.
Just for what it's worth, I did read the report and I did ask some folks about that specific tree and where we could plant them on the property. It would be a little difficult, just given like what available space there is to plant additional trees, so...
Especially an oak that's going to get pretty big?
Correct. It's quite large. And so it would be my ask to the committee to, just given the fact that we planted an additional twenty trees net new for one severely damaged tree, that that would be, you know, context and thoughtful consideration for, you know, negating the additional box, specifically this type of tree that's suggested.
So I seem to hear consensus of that. Do I, does that meet you, what you had mentioned?
So that you're basically pulling out the penalty and the tree value?
That's basically where it is. No?
Yeah. I, I, I'm a little uncomfortable. I mean, I, I like the fact that we're being flexible, but I, I would still include some, I mean, again, this is the point of, you know, is it, is it okay to not know the law and then come in? I understand that the compensation's, the offsets, all that matters, so I would put in some, some fraction of that.
What's your recommendation?
Yeah, I was going to originally say 50%.
Of the penalty amount?
Of, of, well, and the tree value, I don't know what to say about that. I mean, it was a diseased tree, so we won't know about that. But I'd say at a minimum of the penalty, yeah.
Just, my, my only counter to that is, you know, just given like the tree was significantly diseased with complete coverage.
True. But that, that's the tree value part of 3,200. And then there's on top of that, the penalty of 3,200. So I'm only addressing the penalty.
Understood.
Are you comfortable with that? So hit the proposal. The proposal I have that I understand is the city needs to recover its costs, which is arborist costs, the 513, the code enforcement officer, which was 289. And then council member Paulson is saying, "Look, we can't ignore that there is a very important tree heritage, heritage tree desire within our community to keep canopy trees. So we need people to know that that's an important thing and that it is an expectation to know that." And he has asked to take the penalty and reduce it by 50%. Is that right? Do I understand that right?
Yeah.
I'll support that.
So that, that is, makes it, I don't do it in my head anymore.
A point of clarification for, for the council?
Yes, ma'am.
To make sure that we're tying penalties to actual values, I recommend striking either the tree value or the penalty value, but not arbitrarily reducing one or the other without any support.
Support. I get it.
That was going to be my recommendation is that we, because the tree was apparently diseased, looked like it wasn't going to survive.
Had no value.
We maintain the penalty and adhere to the code, which requires a penalty. So we maintain the $3,200. We recover our costs for the arborist and the code enforcement officer. And then the question becomes, do we require planting of another tree?
So you look like you want to make a comment on that?
All right. Comment, and then I'm going to do something I probably shouldn't remember something where I can't tell you what day it happened. But I want to be careful that you're saying the tree had no value. The arborist the city hired said it had a value. That's what the 3,200 represents, an arborist's determination of the value of the tree.
But the tree was gone.
He, so if you read the report from the arborist, he is saying to you, "Had the tree not been cut down, it had a value of $3,200." So, so I don't think we want the record to say it had no value.
Okay.
Because that contradicts the expert that we retained. In the debriefs, as my mind, former council member Larry Chu, I seem to remember a similar comment from an appellant about not being able to plant replacement tree on the property. And I think the council in that case requested that a number of trees be funded that would be planted through our park fund, which is actually where this penalty money goes. So I think in that case, they said, "Plant X number of tree, pay to plant X number of trees at Piper Park." So we can offer that to you, that there are certainly public property where we could, and our cost to plant trees is pretty modest, so it's not going to be a huge number. I don't know what it would be, but...
Okay. So thank you for that clarification because we were arbitrarily doing, the proposal was an arbitrary 50, 50% reduction, but that doesn't come with any substantiation. So, so it sounds like I, I'm hearing from, from two of you at least, that there has to be a penalty for this because this is an important incentive and, and policy of Larkspur for our tree maintenance. And you're comfortable with keeping the penalty or we should be keeping the penalty as outlined here by staff? Is that, Sarah, are you doing that? And recovering the costs, which are the arborist costs and the code enforcement officer costs? What do you think of that?
Yeah, I mean, it feels like if we're also going to make him plant another tree somewhere, it just feels like it's, it's a lot of money for what I feel is a tree that was pretty, it was a stop and, you know, it just didn't feel like it was going to be, it wasn't a full grown tree. I mean, it was, you know, it was diseased and, and so then maybe what we say is the 3,200 encompasses, we would recoup our costs within the 3,200 and then we, you know, we just make it that. We just assess the penalty because we would, I mean, that would cover our costs, I guess.
And that does speak to that suggestion that the penalty cannot be arbitrarily lowered based unless there's legal...
I'm going to point out, the way the code's actually written, the penalty is two times the value of the tree.
Right.
For purposes of making sure applicants and appellants understand what they're appealing, we tend to show it the way it's shown in the staff report. But that factor of two is what you could play with, right? You have the value of the tree. You could say the penalty is one times the tree, penalty is 1.5 times the tree. And I think you would probably then be well within your discretion. Could be less, it could be less than one, right? It could be a fraction of the value of the tree. But I think you want to tie it to the value of the tree.
And the tree value is 3,200, as the staff has said. So we need to tie, if we have a penalty, it has to be tied and related to the tree value. I get it.
Some multiplier of the tree value.
About zero.
Well, that's your proposal and your proposal said.
Yeah, but I guess if we reduce it by 3,200, I mean, that would just be, you know, whether it's the penalty or the, the tree value, I mean, it just, anyways.
So I, so I mean, we've got a lot of ideas here and we can't, if we don't reach consensus, we just, somebody needs to put forward a resol, not a, a resolution, a, a proposal.
Solution.
A solution.
Yeah. I mean, I...
And then we can take a vote on it and then we...
Am I able to make a proposal to the committee?
After you're listening to our debate?
Yeah. Yeah. So just given like the, you know, the state of the tree, would it be equitable in the committee's opinion if I, if we put a 0.5 value of the tree and I paid a $1,600 fee to recoup the costs, the arborist fees? I'd be happy to do that.
So taking the penalty...
I would be willing to pay, I'm saying my proposal would be to pay $1,600 to...
To for the penalty part?
Correct.
And then the recoup costs would be the additional costs that were the arborist fees and then city inspection fees that were, that were incurred for, for managing this? So he's offering essentially a half of the penalty and...
Essentially a third of the penalty.
A third of the penalty. Or a third of the value of the tree. So does anyone want to put forward an idea that we can vote on?
I'll put forward that I, I believe we should do one times, one time the value of the tree and recover our costs.
So that would be the 3,200 plus the 289, 80, and 513, 30?
Yeah. And I also believe that a tree should be planted.
On this person's property or in...
I'm happy for it to be planted somewhere else, but the Box...
The 24-inch Box Valley Oak Tree.
That is being suggested to me is something that will grow to be the size of a heritage tree. I don't know what the trees are that you've planted, but I, I would like to see another tree capable of becoming a heritage tree planted.
So I hear Sarah has put forward, and I'll need a second, but let me clarify it. The arborist's cost, the code enforcement officer's cost and the penalty of 3,200 is outlined by staff, plus replanting a 24-inch Box Valley Oak Tree as mitigation, not necessarily on that property, but somewhere within Larkspur's jurisdiction? Is there a second to this?
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a proposal and a second? So I think we need to vote on that? Was that clear what our proposal was? Am I doing this incorrectly?
I'm just thinking we probably should restate it so we, we know we're clear at staff. So if I heard it correctly, do you want to...
The current proposal on the table is...
To adjust the penalty to one times the value of the tree rather than two times. So you would be changing the code in this case for this particular appellant to one times the value of the tree, $3,200. You would also like to charge to recoup the two expenditures that the city incurred in its enforcement, the arborist report and the code enforcement. And then you would like to require the replacement cost of a tree to be determined by the... enforcement, the arborist report and the code enforcement. And then you would like to require the replacement cost of a tree to be determined by the city manager and staff to plant a tree somewhere in a public space since the applicant doesn't feel he can accommodate it on his property.
Is that clear for what you've proposed?
Yes, I would say that the applicant could plant that tree on his property if he determines that there is place for it
Fair enough.
On his property, yeah.
Fair enough. We're happy to work that out.
Okay, so Councilmember Margulies put that forward and Councilmember Paulson seconded it. So we'll now have a vote. Are you
I'm sorry. Yeah, I am not clear. So can somebody just tally the numbers and tell me how much we are asking total?
We've reduced it by thirty two hundred.
So taking that seventy
We've reduced it by thirty two hundred.
That's it.
Her proposal is to reduce, to take away the tree value.
Anne added the requirement of planting the tree and the city staff will work with the appellant if he can't do it on his property.
Part of the original that was already there. So that's not a change.
Except we've changed it to say we will offer public property if
If, if.
If necessary.
So we've expanded the options.
Yeah.
Is that clear?
Okay, yes, it is clear.
Okay, so if that's clear and that's been reiterated, it's been brought forward and seconded, so we'll have a vote. If that's clear what the proposal is, all those in favor of that?
I
All those opposed?
No.
No? Anybody abstaining? No. Okay, so then we have split on that. And that means we need another idea to come forward that tries to meet the expectations of what you have. Stephanie's idea was to recover our costs and which I, I believe we have consensus about recovering our costs because that, that is an important part of getting the city. But the tree value and the penalty, Stephanie's thoughts were that the tree value is, or the penalty should be removed, one or the other. Is that, are you, am I clear on that?
Yes, that's correct. Right.
So Stephanie, you're saying
But how is that different from
How is that different? I don't follow you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just feel that, and then also the, and adding on the tree, you know, planting another tree, which I don't know how much that might cost, but there is another cost on that. So my original proposal would just do thirty two hundred total and just
And that just falls to the penalty?
Right. And that just, you know,
encompasses the
Everything, right, exactly. So I don't, okay, okay. So I guess my, my proposal would be just thirty two hundred dollars.
Fee in that wrap.
Flat fee, right. And that, however, that breaks down in terms of the arborist costs and the code enforcement officer, just take that out of the thirty two hundred.
Now, is that allowable to be a portion of the, of the penalty? Because we have to tie the penalty into a logical format?
I think it would be simplest to say you're waiving the two cost recovery items and just collecting the
The penalty.
Yeah.
One times the fee.
Okay.
Because it's just an accounting matter for us of making sure we, you know, we address the costs we incurred.
Alex, quick question. If, if we, I, I'm not sure how the code reads on this, but if you have a property, a heritage tree, and it's dying, it needs to be removed, does that necessitate a replacement?
No, it's only if you violate the code that you're mandated to do a replacement.
Okay. And so there was some ambiguity about, about this being left. So Sarah, I mean, that's maybe my, you know, I, I think what Stephanie's saying seems reasonable to me because I understand the motive, like, you know, if you take one out, you should put one in. But if it's already on its way out, which we can ascertain a hundred percent, but I'm going to assume that here, then that, that seems fairly equitable to me.
So you're propos, and then what is your position on the second recommendation by the staff, which is to replacement tree?
Yeah, I think we just assess the thirty two hundred dollar penalty, if that's what we're calling it. And then he's already, yeah, and leave it at that. He's already planted.
So put that forward as a motion.
Okay, so I'll make a motion.
I move.
I, I move. That we assess a thirty two hundred dollar penalty.
All in.
All in fee for the removal of the California Bay tree and that we do not require a replacement tree to be planted.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a new motion on the table and a second. So just to clarify what it is, Vice Mayor Andre has introduced that we calculate removing the tree value and the total penalty being thirty two hundred dollars, which is the penalty for the illegal tree removal, which encompasses our costs. Am I correct?
Or you're just striking
Or striking the cost.
And the tree, appraised tree value.
And the appraised tree value and the code, the code enforcement officer and the requirement to plant an additional tree since it's evident that he's already planted additional trees. And you seconded that?
Yeah. So the, so the net is, is a four thousand dollar reduction.
Yeah, but it's thirty two hundred total. All right. So we have a motion on the table and a second. If everybody's clear with that motion, since we've had a lot of jiggling around? Yes, everybody's clear on it? All right. So all in favor? I, anyone opposed?
I'm opposed.
Any abstentions? So did I hear three and one? So that's three motion passes? And is it clear to staff how to move forward with this one?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, appreciate you listening to the case.
Yeah. And best of luck.
Okay. So
And, and thank you for a respectful process, too.
Hey, Alex.
Alex, that brings us to our next issue. Do we have additional materials on this one? Yes, we do. Ten Walnut. There's additional materials in the back. Now, there are two matters related to this. We will begin with the public hearing on Ten Walnut Avenue, seven point two A. And we're going to take these separate because they're separate issues, although they do, they are at the same residence with the same appellant, but they're two different issues. So we're going to deal with them in two different ways. Seven point two A is an appeal of another, of a heritage tree removal at Ten Walnut Avenue. And the property owner, the appellant is here in the audience, and he'll be offered to speak to us also as a previous property owner did. But we will begin with a staff report. I'd also like to refer everybody to materials that are in the back, materials that are online. And there are materials that will be shown on the screen for this matter. Thank you, Alex.
All right. Thank you. So yes, this is another item related to the appeal of fines associated with non unauthorized heritage tree removal permit. For a bit of background, this is at Ten Walnut. The planning commission had approved a project at that property in September of twenty twenty two. When they approved that project, it included the removal of two heritage trees and sixteen inch bay tree and one thirty six inch pine among another, a number, excuse me, of trees which were not of sufficient size to be designated as a heritage tree. It came to staff's attention that during the course of construction, two additional heritage trees were removed, and these were near the parking area directly adjacent to Walnut Avenue. And they're shown on the right there, trees numbered one and two. And like I said, these were not a part of the original approval. So again, per the code, people who illegally remove a tree without a permit must be, must pay a fine equal to twice the appraised value and replant a tree. In this case, the value of both trees combined was determined to be twenty seven thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty cents, including staff time. The total penalty then was fifty six thousand, three hundred, thirty five dollars and twenty cents. Additionally, the replant requirement was, in this case, it wasn't actually a replant requirement. The owner was given the option to retain the sixteen inch bay that he had previously proposed for removal or to preserve two additional non heritage trees, which at the time, planning, the planning commission approved the project, weren't a part of the heritage tree removal permit. And the owner is appealing the requirement to maintain the bay tree as well. And just for a bit of reference, I've attached the landscape plan. These two trees outlined in orange red here are the trees that were removed without a permit. And this tree in green here, this bay, that is one that we would propose to be retained by the property owner as, as the replacement tree of sorts. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the council uphold staff's determination that the property owner violated the municipal code, code, excuse me, and uphold the fifty six thousand, three hundred, thirty five dollar, twenty cent penalty fee and the requirement to maintain the sixteen inch bay tree. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions for you.
So let me just do an overview of this. When the property owner submitted plans to the planning commission for the renovation that's going on, it included tree removals, which were approved by the planning commission, including several heritage, two heritage trees
Yes.
that the planning commission, for the purpose of being able to do the remodeling and construction project. And these two, so those were permitted. And these two additional trees ended up, it appears to be part of a retaining wall or a, a parking area. And they were in the way of the parking area is what I seem to see here.
Yes. So the project exceeded its scope during construction.
I see.
It was approved by the planning commission. So at a site visit, it was determined that this retaining wall was
Or a parking area.
Yes.
Yeah.
Parking area was not originally part of what the planning commission had seen. And that's when the tree removal had come to staff's attention.
So in a regular permitting sort of review process for construction, if a property owner realizes that their project needs to have a revision to it, because now they realize they need to put in a parking pad or whatever, what would be the normal process? Would they return to planning commission and then seek approval for that addition and tree removal at that time?
Yes, the, the code does allow the conditions of approval that are generally attached to projects allow for minor modifications to be approved by the director. But in this case, something like what had gone on on this property would have returned to the commission.
Would have had to go back to the planning commission because it was a substantial parking pad that was added?
Yes.
But we're not dealing with that. We're dealing with the trees that had to be removed to add that piece to it.
Yes.
Okay. And at the time that it was inspected, the two trees were, the, they were two heritage sized California bay trees were entirely gone from the property?
That's my understanding.
Okay. And so how, how was it calculated that of the value? Was that based on nearby trees or the residual tree roots that were, or trunk that was there?
So the arborist report contains his calculation, or if, and let me just, but it's, it's based off of the size of the tree, its condition and its health. And so
I see it here. Okay, says that I was not able to assess the subject trees prior to the removal. The stump of tree one had been entirely removed, but the stump of tree two was still present, had been damaged. He was able to measure the stump. So that's probably where he came up with the size of the tree. Okay, I'm just talking out loud right now. Okay, any questions on this particular fact pattern for Alex before we speak to the gentleman? We're not in public hearing yet, but you can when we open up to public hearing, which is after we have further conversation and we have, we hear from the appellant.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Alex, okay.
Yeah, and then
Thank you, Alex. So in one of the photos, and I don't know whose it looks like it's an attachment to seven point two A, so I guess it's a part of the staff report. It looks like there were utility lines very close to the trees or running through the trees. So would that have been a factor? Had the homeowner wanted to cut down these trees? I don't know how that would have factored into the decision at all. I don't know.
The municipal code specific to heritage tree removal does contain a carve out, but it's specific to utility companies removing it or trimming a heritage tree near your power lines. It's not put on the property owner to decide that that's a, an issue.
Okay.
Because we don't own the utility lines. That's the utilities' responsibility to, yeah.
Okay. And then the, I, I know we're not talking about the parking lot or the retaining wall, but is that a private parking space? Or is that going to be a public space where the neighbors can use the parking?
Believe that will be a private parking.
That will be private, okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before we, we hear from from, I'm gonna make sure I pronounce your name correctly. Yes, Hermus. Want to pronounce it correctly? Nope? Okay. So we don't have any questions at this time. So Ms. Hermus, would you like to come up and speak to us, please? Or your representative? Okay. And you saw what we did last time, that, that we'll ask questions after you share your information and we reserve the right to come back and ask you additional questions after we speak with staff. And we do have some handouts, which include the materials that were submitted by you, and they're also available online. Thank you, Allison. Yes.
Good evening. Thank you, council members, for hearing me tonight. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, are you, can hear okay? Can he hear, can we hear okay back there? Got it. Okay. Thank you for asking.
So first of all, I want to begin by acknowledging openly that the two bay laurels on my property were removed without a permit. That was a mistake and I take responsibility for not completing the permit process beforehand. This was not done with disregard of the city's rules. It was in the midst of a construction project. There's more to the project and that parking area that has been expressed so far. So I'm going to see if I can shed some light on all of that. But we were under time constraints and pressure and you know, regardless of, you know, my delegating or not delegating the buck stops with me. So I want to admit that a mistake was made. Okay. Just another comment, the two, the two trees in question were bay laurels. There's been a lot of talk about this tonight, but honestly, I would not have identified, I was well aware of a tree permit requirement. I would not have identified them as heritage trees. You know, I think I'm fairly knowledgeable about these things. And I would have thought of a heritage tree as an oak. We have an oak neighboring that has been extremely protected, and I pay a lot of attention to that. This is, you know, it is a different species. It is large. It's also extremely pyrophitic. It's prone to disease. It was poorly located and it could not coexist with the wall that I was permitted to build. So I just want to say the nature of the trees is important. I do understand the nature, the, the purpose of the city's tree ordinance. It's to preserve and protect trees, which I'm aligned with those values. So let me pause there and just give a little context to how we got there. So I've lived in that house since nineteen ninety five. I've been there thirty years. I went to Redwood High. I used to play down at Dark Park as a child. And so I value the canopy, you know, the, the ethos of the space. Now, over ten years ago, I started my path down a remodel project of this nineteen oh six house that I live in. And what was discovered at that time was, I think we were getting ready for our first submittal and we discovered as we got a, a survey that the street right of way, street is about eight feet wide, this wide, the street right of way on paper was about sixty feet. And in fact, my home, a third of my home was in the street right of way. So that started about a five year process to adjust the property line. The reason I say that is because suddenly in that property line adjustment, the wall, and I, I do, yeah, there we go. It's a perfect. So again, I'd been there twenty years at this time, and that wall was retaining the street and a little parking area that I'm guessing my predecessor had made, you know, you can imagine a nineteen seventies effort to build a retaining wall and a parking turnout. And in fact, the trees in question are right there, and they were part of what was holding up this wall. So as part of, you know, part of that lot line adjustment, suddenly I was responsible for that wall. There was no requirement for me to change the wall, but I decided to take it upon my, you know, sort of take on the task and the expense of building a new wall that would provide better parking for the neighborhood and better support for Walmart. Okay. And so just downhill of this wood wall is where the new wall was meant to live. What was misstated, and I understand how the misstatement happened here, but I did have approval to put in a new concrete wall. I did have approval to put in a new concrete wall. I think there was some confusion on the plans because Elise, the, the part of the building department who, or planning department, excuse me, who recently left, was herself confused about this new retaining wall that was clearly approved in the plans. She red tagged the project saying that we exceeded our scope. She subsequently reversed that position. I'm happy to pull up plans and show you the stamped approval for that retaining wall. That said, we proceeded with building this new concrete retaining wall and that was an approved item, both from the planning and building department. Those trees could not have coexisted with the new wall. Just the, the, it just couldn't happen, right? They occupied some space. So most certainly, the, the city would have approved the, the tree permit to remove those two trees. Just based on that fact pattern. And again, you know, it was my team's oversight to not pull the permit. So our bad and I, I ask forgiveness of that. That said, it was what I would say is, you know, I have operated in good faith negotiating with the city for the last ten years. The new concrete wall, which you're all welcome to come and take a look at, is not inexpensive. It has been a very costly endeavor. Frankly, if I had it to do over again, I wouldn't. You know, we are drilling piers to a depth of twenty feet, tons of rebar, lots of expensive concrete on hillside construction and and a mistake was made. I do feel like I'm being penalized excessively. A couple of things to say, I wasn't trying to hide anything. There was a tree stump that, like I said, when Elise came up to the project, she mistakenly identified the wall as being outside the scope of the permit. She identified the tree stump. I think the tree, because what was left of the stump was sort of subterranean, if you will, it was excavated around. I think that's probably where the measurement came from, because it seems like the penalty, even relative to what you just heard in the previous case, it seems profoundly excessive. In other words, I think those trees, you're supposed to measure them some height above grade and the only measurement that was available to be taken was below grade. In any case, just a footnote, when I asked the arborist who the city hired about the stump, she said this stump is still alive. And I said, well, should I re grow it? And she said, absolutely not. It's terribly located. It's too near the, the roadway. You can see, it's a little hard to see, but between the, this first tree and one of the trees that was taken out, you can see the very straight lines. All those lines are right in the tree canopy, only about twelve feet above the parking area. So you know, her recommendation was this stump should be ground immediately. And we also subsequently worked with Elise to revise the planting plan for, you know, the, the our landscape plan, which is also submitted here. So if I can click this thing forward, I'll show you. But we have placed seven replacement trees. We consulted heavily with Elise and I think she said, you know, four, and we just wanted to be excessive our proposal. So our planting plan has, I think, seven appropriate trees as replacements for, for what was taken out.
So we have about a minute left and then we're going to ask for your
Yeah.
presentation and then we're going to start asking you questions.
Wonderful. I think I hit all my points. So I, I thank you for considering my request and I appreciate your time this evening.
Okay, thank you, sir. So, so just stay up there while we while we ask questions.
Sure.
And of the staff to coordinate things. So.
Just, just to say it, I did not, a little clicker here, but I can click through and show you the landscape plan, which includes the tremendous amount of additional plant.
We have it all here.
On that hillside.
Yeah, we have it all here and I believe we have a lot of photographs online, I mean, in our agenda packet. And that have been available for review and I actually, yeah, and we have the arborist reports, et cetera, too. So. Um, okay, so if I was to distill this down, it sounds like when you went through the process to get your planning commission approval for your remodel, it's an extensive remodel that you're doing. It included an understanding that you had heritage trees on your property that were part of your construction plan. And they were then given permission, because they are heritage trees, for the removal for your remodel. And that was a sixteen inch bay tree, several trees, one thirty-six inch pine, a five inch pine tree and nine small bay trees. So I'm reading that because that on September twenty-seventh, two thousand and two, let you know that our heritage tree ordinance exists because you were part of the planning commission process and they told you, I see that you can remove those trees because that's part of your construction plan. So you were aware of a heritage tree process. What I can't really understand is how, when the new need to put a retaining wall slash parking area that also had similar trees, you didn't follow through with getting permits for those.
Like I said, that, that I had asked somebody on my team.
Your team?
To take care of that. I was under the impression that that was taken care of. But the buck stops with me. I'm not going to make excuses.
Okay.
That's, that's how we got here.
So when you say you asked someone on your team, someone on your construction team, just to take the trees down or to apply for a permit?
No, no, to, to apply for a permit. I think we contacted several tree vendors, including one of the, the, starts with a B, one of the big tree vendors that we're all familiar with.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I was under the impression that this was.
That they had done that?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to clarify that. So because, I mean, we've had instances where people were unfamiliar with the heritage tree law because they hadn't known about it because they hadn't done construction or anything of that sort. But being that you've gone through the whole construction planning process, the whole planning commission thing, all the way back to two twenty twenty-two, I'm just clarifying that you knew, you were knowledgeable about the requirement to getting a, a tree removal permit for those two specific trees, but you relied upon someone else to do it.
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and what I would say is in my mind, the term heritage tree meant something else.
You know.
But I'm getting smarter about it by then. But, but I understood that there was the need for a tree removal from it. There's no argument there.
Okay. Do you have any questions of this gentleman?
I thank you for your information. I'm a bit confused because the staff report suggests that the wall was not part of the plans that were approved. But I heard you say that they were, the wall was actually included in the plan approval. So.
So let's have Alex, because he, our staff person confirm or tell us what that is.
Yes, so the plans that went to the planning commission did not have a replacement retaining wall at that location. The initial plan submitted to the building department for a permit did not have a retaining wall for that location. A revision was submitted sometime, I don't have the date right in front of me, where the retaining wall was put on the plans. That was not routed to the planning department. So the first I see of it is a second revision where the, the retaining wall was reviewed, or well, part of the plans that were reviewed by the planning department.
And at that point, the trees were gone.
I can't speak to the exact timeline on the removal. If you'll give me just a second here, I can see if I can arrange it.
Can I make a comment here? Because I think this is the genesis of some confusion. So if you look, by the way, to the engineering plans as part of the first permit, you'll see very clearly the engineering.
Um, so our staff report indicates that there not clearly indicating that there was a retaining wall and parking pad that was clear to staff during the planning commission's approval. Had the property owner consistently showed the retaining wall replacement on the plans, staff would have required an arborist to review the nearby trees. So additional unapproved work was also found at the site that has since been legalized through the planning commission approval and revised building permit plans. So I think there's some uncertainty whether your original plans, which were approved, which involve these trees and this parking pad.
So if, if we could, if I, I don't have, I'm not on your wifi, but I'm happy to pull up the plans.
Well, I think we'll have.
Happy to direct the gentleman to look at the, the approved, first approved building set and look at the engineering.
So I would just like to clarify that engineering details are one thing, but an appropriate site plan includes all site improvements, of which this retaining wall would be one.
And it was not.
And it was not.
I, I, I don't, I, I'd love to look at the plans. I don't think that's correct. And what actually, look, we hired Polski Prostein Architects, then coordinated with the engineering team. And Elise, like I think there was something confusing somewhere, but Elise red tagged. And I would like this actually clarified for the record. So when she came up, she was unaware that she wasn't expecting to submit a wall.
Yeah. We, we.
And she red tagged it on the spot.
Because it wasn't part of the plans.
That was her understanding. And then she withdrew the red tag without any penalty because she realized that in fact it was properly approved on the plans and I would like that clarified for the record.
So that's a fact pattern that's different from the fact pattern that I have in my staff report, what you're assess, what you're assessing. So this may take a little while for us to determine, but.
I would ask that we look at that second.
I, I understand that, but that's still hypothetically, it's still required tree removal permit for that parking pad, even if the parking pad was approved to be a parking pad there. You would still need to have approval for removal of two heritage trees in that parking pad.
Absolutely. Saying is that in order to build the approved wall.
Yeah.
The city would have, if had I just submitted, which I thought I was doing, the city would certainly have approved the removal of those two trees. That's all.
Well, that's hypothetical, so we don't really know. But I mean, it would have had to go through the process and the process that we have is an ordinance that requires a review of them by an arborist and the size of the heritage tree. And particularly with a construction project, then there is also the planning commission's responsibility to make sure that your parking pad is engineered correctly and et cetera. So Alex, did you have something you wanted to add?
So I can share, this is the, the approved and issued original set of plans. This is the site plan.
We have a copy of that here.
Yes, and this is marked as existing wood retaining wall. There is no new retaining wall shown. And then I've also pulled up the revision where you can see that the retaining wall has been added to the site.
Somewhere, somewhere I think of a point of that, this right here is to indicate that that is the wall. And if you go to that same, same plan set and look at the engineering H S seven. And in the plans, it indicates that that wall is to be somewhere in the vertical portion, that it should, is to be replaced. And in the C N S seven, there is the replacement wall design. There's nothing secret about them here.
So planning staff's position is that any site improvement needs to be shown on a site plan?
On a site plan, yeah. So we know that there was a nineteen seventies wooden wall there that you, was determined that you needed to have a better, a more substantial one. And it, from what we are hearing from the record from staff, was that that was not, did not go through the planning process, which would have included permits to remove the two retaining, remaining trees that were there.
I don't.
And, but, and when I was asking you, you assume that your staff had taken care of that to get the proper permits for the tree removal.
I'd like to separate these two issues for a second because this is important.
Okay.
I worked really closely with Elise.
Yes.
Who was the head of the department. And she clearly acknowledged that this, whatever, the, the, the wall was in the permit set. And I want to acknowledge on behalf of the architect, I'm not the architect, right? The architect that I hired, that it is a little confusing. It says existing wall.
Right.
Not the existing wall to remain. It is just acknowledging that there's an existing wall ahead. So.
So, I mean, we don't, I mean, as the council here, we have to listen to what the fact pattern is that is presented to us and we hear you on that. Your fact pattern is slight, is slightly different. So we're going to have to, we're going to have to navigate that. So.
The gentleman to share with us, like you're really leaning into this point of what, what we missed or what somebody missed, but.
Well, we do have those documents here. The plans. I don't.
Are always attached when you get a building permit. It's.
We don't have those at this moment that I have. So, but that's why we have staff who have already done the big review of this and have given us the synopsis. So while you're looking that up, I would like to ask other council members if you have questions to ask.
There's clearly a wall later in S pages.
So put on your mic and let's move along with asking questions.
Sorry, I, you know, my mic's off. I'm trying to get a timeline here. So can you just put a couple of dates on this? I, the, well, and also just a brief review of process for the public as well. So it sounds like there, there was a site plan and permit sets and everything approved for the general house construction. And the parking was an add-on and it was never part of the site plan. I, you know, if you can just clarify that.
Wait, wait, hold on. He's, so the question was to Alex, so.
So there was a issued set of plans dated March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. There was no note anywhere on the site plan or the architectural drawings that there was a new, a new retaining wall proposed. When this went to the planning commission in September, wasn't shown on that set either. On S fourteen, he has a retaining wall plan that does note wood retaining wall to be demolished.
And that was brought additionally to, to planning?
No, this was just something that was put in a, a structural detail drawing.
Okay.
It was not included in anything else.
So, hold, hold on a second. So is your question for?
Not completely, just say a little more. So, so.
You want the timeline of revisions and.
Well, and just back to the, the S fourteen. So that, what does it mean that it was not part of the approval? Like, you know, what, what's the workflow? You know, what's the step that's missing here?
So generally, planning staff is not looking through structural details with a fine tooth comb. It's, it's limited. It's a review of what your architecturals are, what your site plan is, how these details mirror what was approved by the planning commission. So, you know, generally the structural is something that is reviewed and commented on by the building department. In terms of timeline, let's see if I can. So the initial issue date is that March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four date with the set of plans that has the retaining wall in, only noted as a structural detail. There was a revision, the first revision, July first of this year, I believe is the issue date that shows the retaining wall on the site plan. There's been a second revision, July eighteenth of this year, that also shows the retaining wall on the site plan.
Okay, so the March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four showed no retaining wall and when the July first revision, was there a request for the? And when the July first revision, was there a request for the removal of those two trees that were in the retaining wall right away?
The trees are marked for removal on the site plan. However, I believe that was already after they had.
They had been removed. Okay. So we're getting our timeline straight.
And when when were they removed?
Report says November sixth, twenty twenty five. I believe that's a typo. It should be twenty twenty four.
So six months, seven months, eight months before the July first revision that came through. Okay, but this is a heritage tree hearing. So the plans and the approval of the plans and everything, and the engineering is not for our decision tonight. That's a different decision. It's whether this homeowner removed two trees prior to getting a permit for removal because they were heritage trees. Any questions?
Yeah, and I guess, you know, Anton, good to see you. One, one of my questions. So on the one hand, you're saying that staff, you know, was, you know, delegate, was authorized to do this, and you were on the assumption they got the permit. And on the other side of it, I think you're saying, I I'm not following you. If if the revision was in July and the tree removal was in November, I'm still not following how that lines up.
So I I have a disagreement with what I'm hearing from your staff report. So there's, there is that is not correct. It's not correct that I did not have permission to build that wall. In fact, Elise recognized the error once I pointed out that it wasn't the plans and the red tag. So I bet you, I don't know, I don't think we're going to answer this tonight. I'm happy to try and start making my computer and share all that with you. But I strongly disagree, and I would like it clarified for the record at some point that I had permission to build this wall, which is sort of the foundation for what we were doing. I wasn't just willing to.
Okay, so the walls, one thing, the trees are a different thing. Is we've already assessed that you cut the trees down before the wall was approved. So.
Sorry, that's not correct. The wall was approved. That's my point.
Okay, so we, I mean, what we what we need to rely on is that the data set that our staff has and the permitting process that our staff goes through and the planning commission agendas and all those things that happened, which is inconsistent with what you're saying. So.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
So and and in and in this matter, I mean, there are a lot of opportunities for you to have provided that information to us.
I didn't think this would be an issue, honestly. This is the the stamp on the plans that you just saw in here is spring of twenty four.
Yeah, April, March twenty fifth.
Right, and you know. So this is, I had no idea that this was going to drive away of foreseeing that this was going to be an issue. Again, I do understand how the architect's note was a little ambiguous. I get that. But, you know, plans consist of thousands of lines written text I cannot cite for you, you know, Jethro and Versus.
Okay, so.
Where that was clear.
Let's, I mean, we still have a public hearing that we need to let the the public weigh in on this. So have further questions of him at this point?
Well, I would just ask, you know, your appeal suggests that the penalties are excessive. What do you feel might be a fair penalty? Based on that you did know that heritage trees removals do require permits and there is a process to follow.
Honestly, I think, yes, heritage trees require permits. I was under the impression that it was being taken care of in the same way that I'm not swinging a hammer and making it all happen, right? So so but the buck does not mean, or I would say is, you know, the remember, I'm arguing for the fact that I spent a lot of money to improve a condition that benefits the entire town in terms of a better spot to park that isn't held up by decaying wood and and these two heritage trees. The fence was actually being held up or retaining more was being held up by the tree stuff, right? So so it was a significant spend probably equal to the penalty at least to put in that retaining wall that frankly, I didn't need to secure my property. I I I thought I was doing the thing there as a lifelong resident. I'm staying there. I'm not selling. I'm not moving. So you know, I front loaded with a big spend. This, this was a mistake on behalf of my team, and I'd like to own that. I think number, the value described to these trees is profoundly excessive. Fifty thousand dollars plus is a huge number. I still work. So, you know, these are not trivial numbers, and I think we we sometimes get lost in marin about what the value of the permits.
Okay.
And so I think I should pay for your staff time, the expenses you incurred. I am already replacing the trees with seven more. I would I'd be having to pay for the cost of a permit as if, you know, I would go down, I'd pay the permit. But I frankly think that, you know, a penalty in the amount of, you know, the the value of the tree times anything is excessive. You know, so that that's my honest feeling.
Okay, we're going to ask you to just sit for a minute while we open the, while I open the public hearing because there are, I see one hand online, and this is an opportunity for the community to ask questions or to state opinions to the council or to staff for clarification. I started online and I see Mr. Holmes has his hand raised, but I would offer first for anyone in the audience who has a question, yes, please come forward. And although we have two matters in regards to ten, pardon? Yeah, so hold on a second. We have two matters on the ten Walnut Avenue. This is specifically about the trees. These two heritage trees. We're having another matter about construction management. Yeah. Yeah, yes, yes.
So I.
So just address us and thank you.
Thank you, council. I appreciate you guys. With heritage trees, they all have tags on them. Correct?
I'm not sure if all of them do, but we do tag most of our trees. Yeah.
But where his property is specifically is such a crazy retaining wall of water runoff that I understand what you guys are talking about of having everything being so permissible. Because if that downfall comes from that house, which is like this and insane and the runoff, then that's not going to help anything of the trees and the parks and everything of the sustainability of the property of.
Okay.
Correct?
Well, I, that's, I, that's a hypothetical. I don't know if it's correct or not, but.
Maybe that's just my point of view.
Yeah. So your point of view is that the trees are required to stay there for retaining the water.
Well, because the roots.
The root system to retain that structure of that hillside. Okay.
Correct, yes. And like going beyond the town of thinking that you can pertain something that's out of a control of a waterway and runoff, and you can't not predict weather. Then I'm on your guys' side of like
Making sure.
The walls and the trees and they're tagged and, you know, like, this town is so special. And to have Dark Park right here and all of this, it is so special, and I do not disagree with anything that you guys are saying.
Thank you very much. Mr. Holmes, do you, have you have better audio right now?
James Holmes, I hope I'm doing better. Number one, based on my, I'm very familiar with the area from the last sixty years or so, going back to my little friend, Robert Lewis, who lived at number ten. The originally, that part, that parking space is a public parking space. Originally, it was in the city right of way area. And when the city seeded that right of way area or relinquished that right of way area to the property owner, it was made clear in the documentation that A, that parking space would be retained and B, it would continue to be a public parking space. And I speak from personal experience and having participated in that hearing. That said, and therefore, it can, although the city disclaimed, the city had probably, but I don't know for sure, originally built the wood wall and some years later, the city did a lot of metal building to uphold the street. And so on the one hand, I think it can be argued that the property owner did has done a public service by maintaining, continuing to maintain the public parking space. On the other hand, there's no evidence in the record as to whether or not the wall could have been repaired in a way that retained the trees in the way that the original wall did. Just, it does seem to me that there are three, that said, in the public, what I'll say, the public benefit aspect, that said, there seem to be three aggravating factors. Number one, there was a comprehensive planning process relating to this project. And and this should have been addressed as part of it. Number, in an orderly fashion. Number two, there appears to be a recidivism problem here because the record shows other compliance actions for unpermitted work. And number three, perhaps of most concern, those trees were a big part of the tree canopy. And every effort should have been made to to retain them. And I think that consideration figured into the arborist's evaluation. And just two more points. The the lines running through it were obviously not a problem relating to the trees because the PG and E had had pruned them for years and could continue to do so. And there's no evidence in the record that they were a problem for the PG and E. And and number two, the arborist in reviewing and and doing his report, he, when I looked at it, it did have Google pictures of the trees, which accorded with my understanding also. So so they were big, big, important trees. And they might have been saved. We don't know. It was a a public service to it to hold the parking space, which is a public parking space, notwithstanding that it's on on private property because that was the condition of the of the session of of right of way. But there are aggravating factors here too.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Holmes. All right, seeing no one else in the chamber who would like to address in the public and seeing nobody else online, I'll close public hearing and bring it back to us for further discussion or for their questions if we should have them. But the staff recommendation is that we uphold staff's determination that the property owner owner violated Larkspur municipal code regarding heritage trees and uphold the fifty six thousand, three hundred and thirty five dollars and twenty cents penalty and requirement to maintain the sixteen inch oak tree in the area of the removed trees. Staff requests the city council to authorize imposition of a special assessment and lean on the property to be collected with regular property taxes if penalties remain unpaid by November fourth, twenty twenty five. That's the staff recommendation. Do we have questions further from staff about how they reached that?
Just a quick one. Alex, was, I know Elise retired recently. Was she part of that recommendation?
Yes.
Okay.
And and when you mean by that recommendation in the in this staff report in coming up with the calculation of.
With the calculation and with with all of the determinations. Okay.
I worked with her to draft it before she left.
Okay.
I don't want to be clear. The city staff, we don't have an arborist. Miss Simoni was not an arborist. We retain an arborist.
Right.
The values were calculated by that individual. And the city has no reason to doubt that the values produced by the arborist are correct.
And no one has contested that the arborist made incorrect valuations in what I've heard from property owner.
I just want to make sure we're clear. That, which is the significant part of the penalty, was done by an arborist.
Right.
Not by anybody on staff.
And the arborist is retained by this, by the city. And property owner can get their own arborist too, if if they're interested, but the attachment, seven point two A attachment two is the arborist's report. So just to clarify that, even though some Elise Simone and Community Development Director is retired, she participated in the creation of this report. And that's been affirmed by legal counsel that she was involved in this report. So some of the questions or concerns I'm suspecting were discussed, and this report was put together that of the timeline. Okay, can we open this up for discussion like we did in our previous situation? We have this gentleman who did affirm that two trees were removed from his property heritage level trees. With the, his testimony is he was under the impression that his staff had taken care of getting proper approvals for those. But we don't have any evidence of that, that there were approvals for those trees. Any questions about the timeline of things? Because we are going to go into the second hearing, which is about construction issues, which are different. And I have a feeling that that will also bring up something about the parking area. But right now, we're we're talking directly about the trees.
Yeah, I'll I'll start off just with some reflections. So in, you know, one sense, I'm, you know, it's interesting that tonight we had two tree heritage hearings and we haven't had one since
Twenty fifteen.
Six years ago. So it's, you know, good to get a refresh on the process. And, you know, I appreciate the project is pretty layered. You know, there's, there's a lot going on. But just as a quick comparison, in the last hearing, I guess, Mr. Demrow, you know, claimed he didn't know the law. I think the council believed that, you know, ignorance played some role, but, you know, the responsibility is important. As, you know, kind of fact one. In fact, two is that the tree was unhealthy. And, you know, and may have had to go down. So here, I don't think we're getting a claim that there is ignorance nor that the trees were unhealthy. The the fine seems huge. I mean, I acknowledge that. And that's really a challenge. But, you know, I'm also looking at the values of the tree, like, when is a tree worth ten thousand or sixteen thousand dollars? And that, you know, I'm going to have to trust arborists that that has you know, a meaningful value. So if I were to, you know, take a sledgehammer to a BMW that's worth twenty five thousand, I'd have to consider the value of that versus, you know, my bike, which is sitting chained to City Hall right now. So I think the value of the asset, you know, enters, you know, my my thinking. You know, this, this is, as I said before, it's the tree heritage thing is peculiar to Larkspur to the Bay Area, but it is kind of our social contract. There's a lot of reasons why we do this and a lot of precedents which make it important to uphold this because, you know, a lot of people have had to follow this rule. So those are just my starting thoughts. You know, I think it's it's a bit different than the last hearing.
Well, I I mean, to the valuation statement, if you get the appraisal calculations, which the arborist of Arbor Science put forward, I mean, it's not a hypothetical number. He, the the arborist uses a particular criteria in depreciation factors, replacement tree, computations, additional costs, et cetera. So there's actually a calculated formula to come up with a value.
Yeah, no, and I'm not questioning the arborist. I'm just, I'm just saying that that, you know, that number, you know, just suggests the gravity, you know, that that, you know, these, these are, you know, it's not like, you know, pulling out a privet or some, you know, something like that. So. Anyway, I'm eager to hear the other council members' thoughts.
Stephanie, you have thoughts on this one?
Yes, and thank you for for coming before the council. Yeah, I mean, my thoughts are very similar to Councilmember Paulson's, I think. This is a different situation than the prior situation. This is a very complicated project that you've embarked on. And just given the length of time, you know, you certainly were aware of the heritage tree, you know, ordinance. And I think, you know, just also given the timing of everything, I think there's a lot of confusion. So I just sense a lot of confusion in general in terms of who's doing what on the project, you know, what plans were submitted and when. I mean, and that could just be the nature of how complicated this this project has turned out to be. But I I just feel that, you know, the trees were cut down last November, but it sounds like the plans for the concrete wall weren't submitted until July. So there was quite a bit of time there where. So there was quite a bit of time there where, you know, I'm not sure what the big rush was to cut down these two trees. And could, you know, time have been taken to ensure that, you know, prior to cutting down the trees, that someone on your team had actually submitted a permit before actually, you know, cutting them down. And these are full grown trees. I mean, you know, the pictures are different than the, again, you know, the prior situation. So, yeah, I would just say that I think that, and I also agree that, you know, the penalty seems stiff, it seems very high. I know concrete retaining walls are not inexpensive. But I also feel that in this instance, you know, maybe a little bit of better oversight, I guess, of the project in general may have resulted in a different outcome.
Sarah, do you have thoughts?
Thank you for coming in and sharing your concerns with us. I too would say I also have similar thoughts to Vice Mayor Andre and Councilmember Paulson in that this is different from the previous case because the, there was knowledge of our ordinance and the need for permits to remove trees. That said, it does sound like it's been a complicated project. And, you know, potentially tighter management could have avoided this. I'm not completely clear on all the timelines, those have confused me. I also do feel like the amounts of the fines are pretty steep. And I wanted to say, I do appreciate that you have done some measure of public service in creating a better reinforced public parking space on the road. So I don't want to overlook that because I do think there's benefit to the public. So, you know, I'm willing to potentially look at these costs and consider potential revision.
Okay. So I think I hear from everyone that this, Mr. Harms was aware of the need to get a permit. Ignorance of the law is not there. And in fact, the Arbor Sciences has indicated they even met on the property with the arborist in June 14th, 2022 to discuss tree removal process to get the plan. So I think you were knowledgeable about this. The trees, there's no indication that the trees were unhealthy. There's, in reference to how we had another possibility of a very unhealthy tree that had been topped. These appeared from the photographs and from the arborist's report that there had not been any structural damage to the trees or unhealthy. And you indicated to us that you pretty much thought that one of your employees or one of your subcontractors had applied for a permit and had retained that or received that. So you knew a permit was required, but that wasn't done. So now we're stuck with realizing that all of that fact pattern shows that the process was known to you, but not followed completely. And whether it was your subcontractor or the people working on the property, you have said four times, because I counted, the buck stops with you, which is true. Because the buck does stop with the property owner because you're ultimately the responsible party to the property. So that leaves us in a conundrum, which is there are two trees that have been removed. And we have an assessed value from a professional arborist. And those come to dollar amounts. And we have the latitude, as we did in other circumstances, to consider an alteration to that penalty. In the, but we need to look at every circumstance as unique. I think this fact pattern shows a property owner who maybe not knowingly violated, but was aware of the terms and conditions of what needed to be done for a proper construction permit process and tree removal. So we have the calculation of penalty that we can debate now, but the value of tree one was $10,986.47. I'm just going to round it up as the arborist did in the appraisal calculations. Tree two was $16,700. Then it costs arborist, staff time, and then there's the penalty. Now, if we're going to be consistent application of the law that we did for this previous property owner and the value that we hold for keeping our process of tree maintenance and tree canopies intact and following the permit process, then we assessed a penalty on the previous gentleman. And the penalty is equivalent, it has a percentage of the value. It's a one, it's a one for one value. That was a stump that was worth less, but we're dealing with two live trees that had no indication from our assessment or our staff's assessment that they were damaged. So their value was much higher. I'm willing to hear arguments if this staff's suggestion of the calculation of the penalty should be construed differently based on that logic. I think we've all argued that recovering our cost is key. And that is, that's a given because of the time that's taken for staff. You argued that we have an inherent value in maintaining the canopies of our trees and a process in which people respect that we do have a process about trees. And we're unique in many places because our trees have become, are an integral part of the history of this community.
Yeah, I mean, in the last case, I think we waived the value of the tree and sort of absorbed arborist staff into the penalty and just asked for the penalty. In this case, I think we have the value of the tree.
We have to.
And the question is with knowledge, should there be a penalty? So I, you know, again, I, I mean, I think, you know, flexibility is important. I think, you know, this is a tough one because the other one was also not, you know, we're talking about a factor of almost 10. You know, so I realize that's a lot of money and I don't want to take that lightly. But again, to me, this is about consistency. And, you know, we had this very complaint when it came to zoning. Like if we're not respecting, if everything's a variance, then what's a zoning law? So I think, you know, this is something that people have fought tooth and nail for. And whether it's my vote or not, I'm here to represent the will of the people that this is a value of the community. So I think we have to, you know, we have to take all sides of this seriously. And, you know, and I think also consider that this is a very high amount.
So do you have a proposal?
I, you know, I think the value of the trees need to be included because that is, well, I mean, they're gone now. So what's, if Alex can remind me, what's the mitigation for the missing trees?
The suggested mitigation was to retain the 16-inch bay tree that was previously proposed for removal.
Okay.
The 16-inch bay tree that is on the property still?
16-inch diameter tree?
Yes.
And that's not, that's scarcely what the trees were that were cut down. I mean, those are mature trees, right?
Wait, what was your question with the mitigation was the penalty? The cost of the penalty plus retaining an additional tree that was on the plans to be removed?
Well, kind of going back to the last one, we had, yeah.
I see. Okay, thank you.
I mean, that's in the staff report, so thanks for the reminder.
Got it, on this paper, got it. In addition to the tree fine, tree replacement is also required. The municipal code, a parent was given the option to retain a 16-inch bay tree, is what you're doing.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Councilmember Paulson, I'm sorry, so was there a proposal on the penalty?
Not yet, I'd like to hear more from you guys.
Yeah, so, I mean, we have a process. And the process is we have a municipal code and the municipal code outlines the penalties. And the municipal code outlines the penalties and the requirements of getting a permit. And the value of the fine is based on the size and the scope of the tree that was removed without a permit. And we have had permit processes with trees, big redwood trees that were removed and fined. I remember we fined $24,000 and plus change for one redwood tree because the fact pattern showed that the gentleman knew he's supposed to get a permit and he didn't get a permit, he didn't even seek a permit. And I think we, I'm concerned about the nature of the dollar amount here too. But we also have a community that values, that we uphold our tree, the value of our trees as important. Not only to that particular canyon area where it is, but for the, as we write in our municipal code, for the, all of the biological continuation of the tree canopy for the species that live there. I don't know if that's in the code, but that's probably part of the philosophy. So we can make alterations to the calculation of the penalty, but I think they need to be logical. And as our legal counsel has said, you can't, we can't arbitrarily remove a penalty. It has to follow in a logical pattern to what the municipal code says. Am I correct about that?
Yes.
Yes. It has to, I mean, for consistency, it can't just be that we choose an arbitrary number. We have to have a rationale for what penalty, if we apply a penalty, it applies. We have a value of trees that total $27,700, roughly calculating that because that's what the appraisal calculations come to of the rounded total. We can create a, that's the value of the trees. We, I think we have to assume that the calculation by the arborist is correct since we have no other valuation. And then we could choose a penalty based on that dollar amount.
Alex, I have a hypothetical for you. So let's say we did follow process here. And so they, you know, there was an application for the tree permit based on precedent. And so these are two healthy trees. What, you know, and your knowledge of the engineering details, was there an alternative to cutting down the trees? Or, you know, let's talk about the counterfactual for a second.
I would have been left to the planning commission to decide because it was coupled with a greater project. Generally, the planning commission is, I'd say, reticent to approve removal of healthy trees. There are certain findings that I'm sure you're aware of from past hearings about proximity to structures and whatnot. But I can't really speculate as to whether they would find this new retaining wall mission critical and deserving of removing healthy heritage trees.
Yeah, or whether it should be relocated somewhere else. I mean, that's a hypothetical, we don't know from a fact pattern that has not been brought forward with the data to the planning commission. So, I mean, I think the fact is two trees were removed without a permit and the homeowner has agreed that that happened. Whether who was responsible for that or not is unclear, but the buck stops with him. So we know that that is an assumption of his, I would say, liability for that. But, but we need to really, I know we're, we take these things very seriously because this is a lot of money and it's also our community. So I hope that shows that we're really struggling with how to be, how to be reasonable about this, but also be firm because that's why these ordinances exist, is to protect the community as a whole, not the individual property owner, but to keep the community value and environmental value that we all are respectful of.
Alex, can you, back on the parking spaces and the comment about creating a public, shared public good? I want, to my first question, the first time you said these were going to be private parking spaces. Is that what's?
So the property line runs through that little.
Parking pad.
Improved area.
Uh huh, okay.
There is an easement, but it's related to the maintenance of utilities overhead. I think the forwarding is streetlight utilities. I would maybe leave it to the attorney to, if there is a public portion of the road that somebody could theoretically park on, but there is a portion that is his property.
That is his property, okay.
So practically, it's going to be, I mean, that road is super narrow and it is very few pullout pads and the property, the homeowners usually park directly on their parking pad.
Right, there's no separate garage or anything?
No, there is a separate parking area on the other side of, I guess, the entrance to the structure.
Okay, so it theoretically could be public parking?
Theoretically.
Okay.
Where are you going with that?
Well, I mean, if we were to reduce the penalty because we feel that, you know, construction of the concrete wall is in some way benefiting the neighborhood because parking is tight in that neighborhood. I mean, it's like a single, you know, it's a, it's a, it's basically a one-way street.
But then we have an enforcement issue with that, you know. On top of that, is the parking, is this, it's not, it's not done yet. It's not, it hasn't been approved to be done yet, right? Or am I getting that?
No, it's been approved to be completed.
Completed, okay. I think, I see your point that there's a public asset that perhaps exists, but enforcement of that, we'd have to come up with an enforcement plan to say that that is now a public use property thing. And it sounds like it's kind of a hybrid between private property and, which is a lot of that street is like that.
Okay.
So would, would he be able to post private parking on the spot?
That would be another conversation. I don't know about that because I think we'd have to go through another process about that.
Well, I mean, I guess, if they're, okay, so I guess I'm at the point where the reason I would justify reducing the penalty would be because some part of this wall is creating a public good, some sort of public asset. Now, if we can't find that, then I'm, I don't know if I can, you know, he knew that the permit was required. He thought someone else was doing it. I feel like the timing of this was, is still very confusing. These were full grown trees, they're not, you know, diseased or, you know, I just, I don't know that I can make a finding for reducing the penalty other than, other than it's very expensive. I mean, that's the, that's the only reason, that's the only reason is, the only reason we would want to reduce it is because, you know, it's expensive, so.
We set up, I hear you on that, but we, you know, we set up these penalties as an incentive for people also. We keep the permit price low to get a heritage tree removal permit so that we encourage people to follow the process. Knowing that, I mean, hopefully that if not following the process, which we want people to do so that we have an assessment of our trees, if they don't follow that, then the risk is high to get a penalty. So that's a public policy decision that we have to come up with, and it is high. I agree with that. But also the value of trees as described by one of our public testimonies for retaining a slope and the value of the tree within that space is also valuable too. So I, I hear the conundrum, I hear how we are really struggling with this. I'll put forward that I think our staff has done a very large amount of work on this process and has followed our procedure as indicated by our municipal code and by the code that this council, not us, but the ones who came before us, thought through and decided on its intrinsic need to retain trees within our environment. And the calculations are based on a professional arborist skilled at this area. He's this Julian from Arbor Science, he's been around for 100 years. So I would put forward that I would accept the staff's recommendation of the calculation of the violation and uphold the penalty and requirement. I don't think the requirement to replace the 16-inch oak tree in the area of the removed trees is appropriate because there's now, we have determined a parking pad there. So I would uphold the staff's recommendation of the outlined penalty. So I would uphold the um, staff's recommendation of the outlined penalty. That's my motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. Is it clear to the staff what the motion is? Which is to uphold the staff recommendation of the dollar amount, but minus the replacement of a oak tree within that same footprint because now we have a parking pad there.
So to be clear, the tree that we're talking about is outside the parking pad. It still exists. It's not a replant requirement. It's a retention required.
Oh, to retain, um, requirement to maintain the 16-inch oak tree in the area of the removed trees. That's what the staff report says.
Yes.
So that would not impinge on the constructed new area?
No.
So it's outside of this contest, this parking pad that has now been done?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm, I, I will abridge my, revise my motion to include, I, I was unclear on that, what the staff's recommendation is, which is to also maintain the 16-inch oak tree. Do we, are you clear with that one? Are you still in a second with that?
It's just
Yeah, I'll second.
The 16-inch bay.
Oh.
Is what it says. The option to retain a 16-inch bay that was proposed for removal.
Well, let's be clear on that because on page of the staff report, page four, the requirement is to maintain the 16-inch oak tree. So can we be clear on what?
It, it's a bay per the plans. I think that's a typo.
Okay, well, I got it. Thank you for finding that.
Sure.
Not the time yet, but.
Madam Mary, did want to also clarify, when the council makes this sort of motion, you are including authorization of staff that uh, if the appellate can't pay the penalty before the deadline, it's written in the staff report, staff would have the option to impose a property lien.
Can we navigate, is that negotiable, the deadline? Um, because as indicated, um, this is a substantial, is it negotiable to push that out six months?
Or? Yes, the 30 days is not.
The 30 days is negotiable?
Yes.
Would that be an administrative negotiation or would that be something we have to put in this resolution?
I don't think the staff feels comfortable negotiating a deadline. So I think if the council wants to create a different deadline, I would ask you to do that.
So the deadline is recommended by the, um, in the staff report is November 4th, which is 30 days from today. Uh, but in reference to the fact that um, we have all acknowledged that this is a large uh, penalty, would we be more comfortable pushing it out a few extra months?
Yes.
I mean, I'd be curious if that helps the property owner.
Well, I don't, I'm not sure it's going to matter. Yeah. So I would propose that um, we change the um, the um, collection date to um, that's two, three, uh, four months. So that would be February 4th. And I'm only saying four months just to give it a little bit more time. Are we okay with that? So that, that's, um, I've changed the, so you'll need to um,
I'll resecond.
Okay, she re-seconds. Are we clear on this one?
Yeah.
Um, okay, so the motion as it's held is to follow staff recommendation to uphold the determination that the property owner violated Larkspur Municipal Code 12 dash 16 dot oh seven oh and uphold the 56,335,000 point two penalty and requirement to maintain the 16-inch bay tree in the area of the removed trees. And that the prop, it should penalties need to be collected by February 4th, 2026.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What if hypothetically, the penalties are not paid? Then I believe that we should have something that staff, I would want to give them the opportunity to take the measure of placing a lien on the property.
Yeah, so that is, go ahead. You guys say it.
That would be, I, I, that we would request that that's part of your motion that.
Oh, thank you. You've had a good one there.
Sure.
Um, because it says they will be collected with regular property taxes if penalties and to special assessment and lien on the property to be collected with special regular property taxes if penalties remain unpaid by February 1st, 2026. Are we clear on that now? Is that, is that stated correctly? Okay, so that is the recommended, that is the motion and it's been um, put forward and seconded. Um, so we uh, vote on that? So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? So that motion passed. Um, are the staff clear on that? Okay.
Yes, Madam Mary.
That brings us to um, the second issue on 10 Walnut, um, which is a item 7.2B lien, um, or special assessment for unpaid administrative citations on 10 Walnut. Um, and with our same Mr. Herramis is the property owner. The council is being asked to consider directing city manager to file a lien or special assessment against 10 Walnut Avenue for um, the amount of $9,930 for unpaid administrative citations if fines remain unpaid by October 15th, 2025. Alex, could you give us a staff report, please? And we do have additional materials here.
Yeah, just jump right into the background here for you. So um, the property owner was issued citations and associated fines totaling $18,330 for failure to follow his approved construction management plan for his building permit. The property owner chose to appeal the citations and there was a hearing that was held pursuant to the municipal code. And that was held November 26th of last year. The administrative hearing officer affirmed that the fines were valid. However, the fines were reduced to $9930. A fine for to be paid within 180 days from that decision or May 25th, 2025. To date, uh, those fees remain unpaid. And in particular, this was, as I said, construction management plan issues with storage of materials. I believe there's a debris truck placement issue among other things, among other things, excuse me. Um, so staff's recommendation is that you authorize the city manager to file a lien or special assessment against the property if the fines remain unpaid as of October 15th of this year.
Okay, um, so reading through the materials, it looked like much of this was um, in regards to code violations for construction management, um, inadequate construction management at various times, right? And then to um, for the memorandum in which Adam Wolfe, town manager, the town of Cordermedia, did the administrative hearing. All of those matters were discussed and affirmed at that time?
Yes.
Okay, so um, was the property owner uh, an appearance at that time?
I believe he was.
Okay, I'm just getting clear on what it is. And we have the whole um, spectrum of um, code violations and including um, material storage, retaining wall and um, materials rolling down the hill, et cetera. So that was all discussed at the um, administrative hearing?
Yes.
Okay. So let's begin before we have the public hearing and hear from the um, appellate. Do we have questions of staff on this matter, sir? Yes.
Just, I just want to emphasize, this is a little different than what you just did the hearing on.
Oh, right.
There's sort of a the code doesn't really contemplate that the administrative hearing process is going to produce fines of this magnitude. And so uh, staff has the ability at the end of an administrative hearing process to to essentially assess a penalty that as this process produced. What we don't have the authority, only you have the authority to do is to authorize us to have the threat of a lien and a deadline. And so really, the hearing is required by law, but staff's ask is we want to collect this penalty that was already determined through a appeal process. And only you, through a public hearing, can grant us the authority to use a lien on property if we don't get paid.
So the matters of the construction management have already been discussed and argued with the administrative hearing and resolved.
That's right. And Mr. Wolf actually made changes to the penalties. He actually reduced them based on the hearing.
So at this public hearing, we don't offer um, a discussion of those things because those already occurred. This is really goes down to collecting the fines through a lien on the property.
Yeah, it's probably something uh, next time we do a comprehensive code review, we should clean up because it's kind of an awkward hole in the in the process to bring this to you since that's the only matter really before you.
Okay, so is that clear? I'm, I wasn't as clear on that. We're literally not, and to discuss all of the um, fact pattern that was already debated. It's really to give, if we decide um, to give the city, the administrative um, ability to put a lien on the property.
It just felt really strange to publish the report without providing you the context of how we got here.
Yeah. I, I was helpful. Um, are there questions now that that's been explained that we are limited in scope to what this decision is? Um, are there questions of staff? No? Okay, so um, sir, it's a public hearing and it's an appeal for you. So um, would you like to address us as you did before? But you'll need to come up to the microphone because it's a recorded message. So.
I can just be super brief on this. Uh, I didn't know this amount was outstanding. Uh, somehow, maybe I, I missed it at the time and but I'm happy to pay it. So you will rule whichever way you will.
Okay.
But this will get paid immediately. I just, you know, if I received the letter, I, I don't know what to say about it, but it'll get paid. This is not, you know, I made my argument before. I disagree with the previous ruling.
I ass.
But I don't think tonight's the time to work all that out. So happy to just guarantee that this will get paid.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yep.
Since this is a public hearing by um, our agenda, I need to open it to the public. Um, so opening the public hearing, is there anyone online who would like to speak to the council or ask questions on this matter? I see no hands raised. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to discuss this? All right, seeing then, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to us. It sounds like we have um, the appellate who has agreed to pay this fine. And it sounds like the staff recommendation is the city council authorize the city manager to file a lien or special assessments against the property if the fine remains unpaid as of October 15th. Do um, we have a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion to approve that uh, city manager has um, the ability to file a lien or a special assessment against the property um, at uh, 10 Walnut in the amount of $9,930 if the fines remain unpaid as of October 15th, 2025.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that matter passes. Um, thank you, sir. We are done with um, uh, most of our public hearings. Since we have one more matter, which is the um, item for the introduction of ordinance 1091. You're here in the back, sir. Do you have, um, did you want to, were you here for a particular issue or was it this one? My goodness, you've been waiting a long time. So um, but I would like to ask that we have a five-minute um, break before we begin this because it's already 9:40 and we've been at this since 5:30. So five minutes, nobody go far.
Uh, thank you. Um, we're returning from a short break from, um, we're still, we're still here. It's October 1st, 2025. We need to return for a break. We are now on to item 7.3.
My mic isn't on. We're now on to item 7.3, introduction of ordinance 1091, amending Larkspur's municipal code chapters 18.2 and 18.1 for up to two-unit developments and lot splits and single-family zoning um, districts. Um, we have to conduct a public hearing tonight and, but we will first have a staff report.
Uh, yes, thank you. Good evening again. This item is pertaining to potential revisions to the Larkspur Municipal Code related to the recent adoption of SB 450. Uh, so for a bit of background here, in September of 2021, the governor signed SB 9 into law. That bill allowed urban lot splits and two-unit housing developments on single families, or in single-family zones under a ministerial approval process. In response, the city and several jurisdictions in Marin and across the state adopted objective standards which are contained in the municipal code under chapter 18 dot 100, which created restrictions on the type of developments that were eligible for this SB 9 lot split opportunity. In September of last year, SB 450 was signed into law. This revised the framework of SB 9 and required that any project applying under SB 9 be treated with the same objective standards for any project in a single-family zoning district. So that has created several conflicts between what is in our code and what is in SB 450. So these are amendments to bring the city into compliance with state law. There are a number of changes. I'm just going to hit the highlights here for you. Uh, it would remove an existing 800-square-foot maximum floor area restriction on these new units. It would remove the requirement that the units be deed restricted affordable. Uh, and as we were proposing, it would apply the T3 standards from the objective design and development standards. And if the council recalls, those are the standards that would apply to projects that come in under the housing element and are eligible for ministerial approval should they meet the, the standards and design elements listed in that document. Uh, it also uh, further clarifies the timelines for ministerial approval required here. So there are, in addition to what the staff is proposing, there are a couple of alternatives. You could choose to just enforce the existing standards of the R1 zone, which is the single-family zone. The differences between what's in the R1 zone and what's in the odds is that the odds is a little bit more specific as to the form of buildings um, and architectural treatments, whereas the R1 standards are just your, your basics, height setbacks, floor area, lot coverage, et cetera. Uh, you could also choose to develop new objective standards and apply them to uh, single-family zones. I will say this was kind of foreseen when the odds were adopted. That's why they do contain that T3 edge neighborhood uh, designation, uh, which would apply to, like I said, all of the single-family lots here in, in Larkspur. Uh, I just want to keep it brief, but you did receive one public comment on this item discussing um, some language in the proposed amendment, including utility connections, uh, a non-allowance of a flaglot configuration and the limits that the ordinance would establish for cut and fill. Um, I'll, I'll let the attorney speak to the utility connection. As for the flaglot comment, um, staff's understanding of this is essentially like it's stated in other portions of that ordinance. If, if it would bar the division of a lot and the creation of these units, that a flaglot could be an acceptable remedy for a lot split. However, if a property is, has the frontage to meet the minimum frontage requirements, uh, we can enforce these properties to be divided so that they meet the minimum lot frontage on the public right-of-way rather than a flaglot or the interior panhandle lot configuration. And then with the grading comment, it is correct that it would bar development in a number of cases. 25 combined cubic yards of cut and fill is a very easy amount to exceed, especially when you're talking about an 800-square-foot home. So uh, staff's understanding is that this could be decided on a case-by-case basis and it could be waived should it obviously preclude the development of a unit that's at least 800 square feet. Um, but that it could still remain in, in the ordinance as written. So with that, staff recommends that the council hold a public hearing on the item, discuss the draft ordinance, introduce it by title only. And, excuse me, and including any suggested revisions or other recommendations that you wish.
Okay. Let's begin with questions of staff. Um, does the staff have any questions on this amended Larkspur Municipal Code chapters in regards to making it full compliance with SB 9 and SB 450? No? Okay. I don't think we have any questions at this point, but it is a public hearing and um, I do know Mr. Popovich is here and he's been here all day. So at this moment, since we don't have any questions of you, I think it's pretty clear. Um, I'd like to open the public hearing and ask if anyone in the audience would like to address us on this matter. And you may come forward, please, sir. And just like I acknowledged to you earlier, we did receive your, um, I have it actually here printed, um, your public comment and it is in the record already. Um, I, um, I'll be honest with you. Um, I, um, I'll be honest with you, it came in a little, um, ear- earlier this evening, um, or late afternoon, and I haven't really had too much of time to look at it. But, um, I want to you to know that it is here and we do have it is. And this is the first reading, we have time to work on this ordinance, so go ahead. That, all that being said.
That's great, and, and I, I just want to say that, you know, I think, uh, a lot of the concerns were acknowledged or addressed there, so.
So just, just introduce yourself and, yo.
My name is, uh, Matt Popovich, I'm a Larkspur resident. I live, uh, at Larkspur Landing up the hill from the Perry Building at Larkspur Courts with my wife and my toddler and my nine-month-old who are probably in bed now.
I hope so.
I, uh, I'm a renter currently, but we're hoping to make Larkspur our, our home for homeownership over the longer term. Uh, my family has lived in Central Marin for about sixty-five years. So we would like to be able to stay here, but obviously the, the cost of housing is, is very high, it continues to rise more and more and more. Um, so one way to alleviate that would be, uh, ADUs. So, you know, I, I commented at the planning commission, uh, to really commend them on this ordinance because I think ninety-five percent of it is, is very positive and, and brings, you know, uh, municipal code into compliance with SB nine and SB four fifty. I had some concerns that I shared with a friend of mine who works at a housing nonprofit and, you know, he concurred that, that some of these things, I think in very subtle ways might run afoul of those two laws still. And, um, the particular ways are kind of two categories. One is that, uh, you can't require off-site improvements prior to recording the parcel split. You can require them as part of the permitting process later on, but you can't require them before you actually record the lot split. And, uh, I, I, I excerpted a letter that the, uh, California Department of Housing and Community Development sent to the city of San Diego where it talks about this in relation to, I think like an ADA accessibility feature. My understanding is that this also applies to, uh, like a separate utility meter. Because as part of installing that for the second split lot, you would have to kind of like run a line around the edge of the property, right? So that would be considered a, uh, a offsite improvement. I'm not a lawyer, so obviously, you know, I can't, I can't speak technical language there, but that's, that's my understanding.
And in your letter, you did excerpt that so that we have that for the record too.
Yeah, I would, I would also recommend clicking the links to the letters of technical assistance that HCD sent the city of Long Beach and the city of San Diego because they go into a lot more detail than I do here on all of these points. Um, yeah, so that's one. The other issue is that, uh, SB nine kind of has this sort of fuzzy requirement that's a lot less clear-cut than like SB five-fifties. You can't have separate objective standard requirement. That basically says you can't have any standards that preclude certain configurations, like precluding a split entirely or precluding, uh, two eight hundred square foot units, right? And if you do the math on some of these things, uh, the language in this ordinance that completely bans flag lots, that always requires a minimum of street frontage, those would have to be waived in certain cases with certain, certain sizes of property in order to affect a lot split. So I think that, um, it'd make a lot of sense if there was language in the ordinance, kind of making clear that in that case that was, it's possible to waive that.
And that was sec- your second point?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And then third point, similar to the second point, you know, this one's even harder to visualize because you have to like think about it in three D space, right? But twenty-seven, I believe, uh, cubic feet or, or twenty-five cubic feet, it's, it's like, imagine a, a cube that's nine foot on each side, right? That's all the dirt you're allowed to move when it flattening the hill, right? The hill does not need to be very, uh, very sloped in order to make that impossible for a, uh, eight hundred square foot unit.
And, yeah, in Marin.
And I, I don't know the exact numbers on, on where that becomes possible. Obviously, there's a lot of hills around here and I think, uh, that would happen quite often, right? Um, so also, you know, some language in there that, that recognizes that, that really only applies in the case where, uh, it's not infeasible to build an eight hundred square foot unit. Or maybe just like raise that number, it does seem pretty low, honestly. Uh, yeah, so those, I think, are the points that, uh, that, that seem a little suspect to me in terms of, you know, ability to comply with SB nine, SB four fifty. Obviously, the, the planning stopped a lot of work into this and I think like most of those ordinances is very well done and, uh, brings us into compliance and, uh, yeah, I hope that we can continue to improve it and make, uh, ADUs a little more feasible than they have been so far.
Thank you very much, you did a lot of work for this and as I said, um, it's a lot of material that I think, this is just the first reading, so we're just getting in, uh, in, um, people's suggestions and I think we can continue to look at this material. Um, and e- explore it further, so. And if you would like to run for city council, I would be happy. Or planning commission, I, I have a nine-month-old, but man, I, we need people like you who are thoughtful about this and persevere through a four hours of hearing to really make a contribution to our further analysis of things. So thank you for that, taking the time and the effort.
Apply my wife with some candy when I get home.
Uh, listen, in my book, it's wine right now, so anyway, um, okay, thank you very much. Um, is there anyone else? Then there's no one else in the chambers and I don't see anybody else's hand up. So I will close the public hearing and bring it back, um, to us for any questions of Alex. I know this is the first reading and I assume some of this material will have an opportunity for you to see if it, um, should be adopted. Or do we do that?
I can speak to the questions.
Sure.
Yeah, so we analyzed both of those letters prior to today and it's our position that the installation of a utility meter is not considered an, a community improvement in the same ways, um, that the community improvements were required in San Diego and Long Beach. And so the, the real difference between the situation and those situations is that the utility meter would only apply to this one parcel and would only serve this one parcel. Versus in those cases, it was, um, improvements to a sidewalk or a street that served the community at large.
I see, so it's not really what his suggestion is, doesn't really apply to our area.
Well, you know, it's, it, there is a gray area, um, because the, it hasn't been tested in front of a court and so we're not a hundred percent sure how a court would rule. If they did uphold that position, then, um, we would have the opportunity to amend the ordinance or just not enforce that portion.
Okay, and then the second part was the banning of, uh, flag lots? I don't even know what a flag lot is.
Anything that is physically, um, impossible, we have the opportunity to waive.
I see.
Yeah.
So that's already written in for what you have. And then the third, uh, was his suggestion, cut and fill grading caps, but that seems to be statutory or?
I believe that is the statutory.
The number, but is there flexibility for the twenty-five cubic, eight hundred square foot units? Uh, twenty-five cubic yards, which is what he argued.
Okay. We'll do some more research on that. Once again, though, if there is any like physical impossibility there, you know, say the grade is too.
Yes, too steep.
We can waive that.
Okay, um, thank you for addressing his, uh, questions and concerns and we had no other, um, questions and concerns, so this was just an introduction of the ordinance and to waive the first reading, do we need to, um, uh, vote on that? No. We do. Um, if there's no further questions of Alex, um, uh, do I have a motion to, uh, uh, introduce by title only and waive for the reading of ordinance ten ninety-one? Anyone? Anyone? I'll make the motion. Introduction of ordinance ten ninety-one, amending Larkspur municipal code chapters eighteen point two oh and eighteen point one, oh one, for up to two, two, two unit, uh, developments, oh jeez, and lot splits and single-family zoning districts.
Uh, just quick point of clarification, so this vote would then just put it on the consent.
For next time.
For next time.
Unless you specifically say you do not want it on the consent, yes.
Yeah, okay, no, I mean, I saw a second of that motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second, um, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? No? Uh, no abstentions, so that passes. Thank you very much for all your hard work tonight. Um, we're now reaching ten o'clock, but before we adjourn, um, I, one of the things we do as a council is, um, honor and recognize some of our longstanding, um, leaders in our community and residents of our community who have passed away. And, um, one, uh, recently has been Nancy Curly. I did not have the pleasure of knowing Nancy, but Nancy had, and her family has a long history in Larkspur. So, um, Joan Lubomirski shared the obituary with me and, um, I would just like to close our meeting with reading that obituary because she was an important part of the community. Um, I brought this book, which is The Larkspur Past and Present, which she was also instrumental in helping write. So if you'll indulge me, it'll just take a few minutes. It's with sorrow that we announced the passing of Nancy Curly, who left the world peacefully on September fourteenth at the age of eighty-nine. A beloved wife, mother, grandmother, and great-grandmother and friend. She was born in San Francisco. In February of nineteen thirty-six, she spent her early years surrounded by her mother and extended family. She attended Berkeley, where she majored in history with a minor in French. And then upon graduating, she married her high school sweetheart, Charles Curly, who was also a prominent figure in Larkspur and, um, he passed away in two thousand and five. Nancy's career was defined by her dedication and passion for San Francisco, forming her own tour company and sharing with tourists the history and sites of the city she loved. In her free time, Nancy volunteered in her hometown of Larkspur for the Larkspur Heritage Committee. Larkspur was special to Nancy for in nineteen seventy-one, Joan Lundstrom, chair of the Larkspur Town Meeting, that sparked many changes, asked Nancy Curly to get involved in what was initially called a beautification committee. Nancy and her co-chair Helen Heidcamp, who is also a prominent name, um, soon were looking up library records, tracking down old photos and interviewing longtime residents. Before long, with Curly taking the lead, Larkspur had an official heritage preservation board and an ordinance to match. The downtown district had been placed on the National Register of Historic Places and an ambitious publishing program had been launched. Nancy also volunteered with Guide Dogs for the Blind in San Rafael, helping all things dogs, including housing and caring for breeders in her own home, much to the delight of her two sons Craig and Kent. She's survived by those two sons, her grandchildren and great, great-grandchildren. Um, Nancy's legacy will live on Larkspur for many reasons, one being she helped in writing our history book, Larkspur Past and Present. Um, but I'll, I'll give a, just a little short thing out of here because when I decided our family to move to Larkspur in two thousand and two, it took us three years to find the home that we liked. And we ended up on Palm Hill, which is where the Curlys lived. And this was after, um, they moved and there's a lot of houses in Larkspur that are known by the name of the original owner. So the McLaren House, the Laurel House, different names. The house that I looked at was the Curly House and that was their home. And it's still on Palm Hill, it's been many owners there. But she said, um, when they moved to the, from the Dark Canyon to Palm Hill, she had to wear sunglasses every day for a month inside her own home. Both Nancy and Chuck were stellar players in city activities and rode in the Fourth of July Parade as citizens of the year in nineteen eighty-three. Their property was the site of many hill and city gatherings. Chuck served on the planning commission from nineteen seventy-five to nineteen eighty-three, including several terms as mayor, as well as numerous county boards and Larkspur's twenty fifty committee. Nancy was a founding force behind Larkspur's Heritage Preservation Board, overseeing the writing of the early heritage ordinances and the production of editions of the Larkspur history. So I, I just wanted us to close in, um, the memory of Nancy because the Curly family is, um, long, uh, long legs of history here, so. Thank you, everyone, for indulging me in that and, um, good night, we'll see you October fifteenth.